Welcome everyone. We have Mr. Lee, we have Mr. Dow, we have Mr. Paul, we have Mr. Perry, we have Mr. Allen, we have the way of education, we have Mr. Carey, and we have Mr. Paul. And then I can ask you all to rejoice in the presence of God.
The United States of America, and we have a safe America. And we are the Father, who extends our nation under God, in this world with the repeat and justice for all.
First items we have on the agenda, we still have business. First piece we have is equivalent of high school social studies curriculum. And we have a meeting. This is by Connor, seconded by Mr. Dow. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the high school social studies curriculum. A board of education, any discussion, any comments? This is Lee.
I think I'm in a first round, it's a job well done and uh, it's a support thank you.
Thank you very much, I will celebrate. Um, it's time that it all will get up because it's been a very long table. We're only about the social studies curriculum, please. Getting them to the public would reach, switch to address this item. Or it has to be pleased to move back to the podium. Seeing none, I bring it back to the table. All in favor? It passes unanimously, thank you. Approval of the Santos Warren High School field press box. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the Sheldon Warren High School baseball field press box. The motion please, Mr. Dow, seconded by Mr. Carey. Again, any comments in the room? Mr. Kennedy?
My concern with this uh, recommendation of yours is that uh, some of the funding is going to be um, received through advertising and temporary signs. So I would just uh, like to have you so sure that any advertising agreement or any, any kind of things not extend more than one year. So the Congress, I think are the heroes of advertising.
Any further comments? Mrs. Dow?
If they do see the chair and have there been some kind of arrangement already made because they're working on this, but what happened? They've been telling people that they're uh, want to advertise private.
Dr. Clark, do you need to deal with their agreement?
Or I think, did I go, Mr. Quinn could?
Um, I spoke with the uh, Mr. Parent who's experimenting this in the athletic department. All the advertisers that we approved in advance before we, uh, agreed with the board, so. Well, I would anticipate that, but none of us have been finding out at all, just waiting for approval. That's not close for us. What does that mean?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, it goes every ten minutes, every time you recruit at a time, also got the contract of the length of term of agreement.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Dow?
Just for clarification, uh, she wants to know ahead of time the month that he wants to put on for one year. Is he on plan?
Mr. Kennedy?
You're saying you want, you just want presented to us beforehand, or you want to actually say now I want to add one year?
I would prefer to give you main notes, uh, as I was in consideration for my advertising, the funding may be good. Another year may be questionable, maybe not be in agreement or committed to advertising towards.
Okay, Dr. Clark, making, and for clarification, do you want the board to approve the advertisements? I, excuse me, but most of the advertising that we're referring to also takes care of in a lot of the booklets, which are produced yearly anyway. Um, is there any further comments? Again, I'll invite the public to speak to the side specifically, please, if they have any comments, I ask you to please come and talk to me. Thank you very much. Um, I will also mention, excuse me for interrupting, but we do have seats in front and we have actually reserved them for people that are elected officials. So um, you may prefer not to sit in front, I certainly understand that, but please know that we do have seating set aside. And for the people that have just come in this evening, there are seats over on the right, so please would like to be able to sit down. Um, coming back to the table then, um, again approval of the Fairfield Warren High School baseball field press box. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approves the Fairfield Warren High School baseball field press talks, all in favor? It passes unanimously, thank you very much. Um, and the next item, again, discussion of the superintendent's proposed 2010-2017 budget request. Um, I invite more room certainly to ask questions, and I'll move on from here, please, thank you. Mr. Kennedy? Do you have, do you have, on the floor, at least around the table? Mr. Carey?
Okay, um. We go to uh, page 277, the person I asked, and I'm interested in working right now on uh, universal service funds. So that E-rate funding, um, somebody share to Dr. Clark, I will over our routine of, if that puts me up for a question. Um, can you direct me to the line item within the budget that uh, we are getting our data communication line reduced fund with the USF funds?
Uh, either Mrs. Nash or Mrs. McLean would be able to direct your attention to the request. Mrs. Nash, do you want to respond? Thank you.
So you do not uh, bring down the cost for communication line, although because the E-rate funding is very subject to change.
Please, Mrs. Nash, would you mind coming to the mic, it's starting to carry?
I apologize, I don't have my reading glasses, so I'm sort of squinting weirdly, you know why?
You want to hear?
I may. I think I can do okay right now. Um, the telecommunications budget, I think Mrs. McLean can help me with, with job at Hope that under. But E-rate is funded annually, and as many of you know, every time Congress picks us something, we know what they may do. So what the district has done over my tenure here is um, apply to the grant, uh, receive the funds back, and use them to pay for things that otherwise would end up in the capital budget. For example, the monies that we receive in oh eight, oh, I'm sorry, in oh nine, ten, um, will be used for several replacements and consolidation, which is a project we had on books and decided to fund through that. The monies that we receive are always for the year behind us, um, because there's a one-year lag in actually receiving the money. We have to extend it and then apply for it to be reimbursed to us.
Okay, um, so have we filed our form 470 this year?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Um, and our anticipation is one forty and change?
That was for oh nine, ten.
That was last?
Yeah. Because as, we, we know what the commitment is, our 470 is filed right now for um, ten eleven, but we won't have a commitment on those funds until somewhere between probably May and October.
Is it, is it still rolling, Jerry, right now?
Right now, it's the, actually, they call it the bid period. Once we decide who are better, in some cases we already have existing contracts that are rolling, so it's sort of a perfunctory. We don't have to do a little 470, we do what they call 471.
And um, we're only offsetting the cost of telecom circuits and data circuits with this, we're not applying for offset for us, which is?
Actually, for this year, we've applied for telecommunications costs, or whatever you network cost, phone service, local, yes, and both of which we usually do. We've also submitted for um, web services, um, in other words, actually, whole student website piece for the variety of websites that we have. And we've done another one for um, the switch project. The switch project is called, they call the internal connections and the two and five rule. And typically, our, because of our demographic and economic situation, we're not going to qualify for it, but I went through the effort and.
So four and, if I go off track, you've spent ten years since I've been volunteering this, 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 sure. The benefit of the board member, there's a program, if you look at your phone bills, you see a P that says USF on it, that's seven or eight dollars every month you can. And that holds together about four billion dollars nationwide, which is capable, pays for it, so all schools can be connected to the internet. Apparently that's another thing. We get reimbursed based on um, um, need, so school and program essentially is, is the measure that's part of the, uh, reimbursement rate, so up to forty percent of the surface, which equals roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We might be able to get reimbursed for our switches that we are purchasing at a price of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
We have four hundred and fifty in budget for next year.
Now, is that, is that paid for, that's the main, then you'll get that, or you're not including that?
That's last year's contribution expense.
It would come in the next year.
Right.
It's unlikely we'll get reimbursed for the switches because we um, aren't in the eight or nine percentile, under forty percentile. Um, as a matter of fact, I don't think they've ever gotten that low, the forty percentile in fifteen years for a kind of.
Yeah, with ten years I've been here, the highest we've gotten is actually this year, which is forty-one percent.
But this hundred and forty thousand dollars is not being subtracted out for current years?
No, but, but in theory it is, because we consciously took a project that we could look, I can't say a little bit of that, but we would otherwise have asked for, because we already have that money committed, so we already know that we have that coming to us, or at least close to that.
That's all my questions, if you have to take another one. Should I keep going, Mrs. Kennedy?
Thank you.
Um, alright. Getting back to ARRA IDA Part B, two million, three, eight, six, six, four, on page 277. Thank you, Mrs. Leonardi, for spending so much time indicating the address.
So I'm being, Mr. Carey, while you're looking, um, Mrs. Leonardi, thank you, you've actually spent a lot of time, um, two and a half hours plus minimum with board members going through this, walking through this, it's like, thank you for that.
Do we have, do we have the identification? Yeah, so is that a weird for me, I was not promised, isn't it?
In the packet you received tonight, if I could just walk you through?
Yeah, that's what I said.
What I, what I prepared for you at night out. Um, in the packet you all received tonight, um, there is, first, beginning with a memo from myself to Dr. Clark, related to the excess cost provision. And then there's also, right behind it, a packet, there's a flow chart, the first page is a flow chart of, of the Whole American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and how it applies to the state fiscal stabilization fund and the um, Individuals with Disabilities Education. And then immediately behind that, you'll see a spreadsheet that is the action plan for how, and how we are using the IDA RA fund. So that kind of gives you a lowdown of the difference for both projects we are, have underway now and the process of doing.
Does that include the ECC at the two point three million dollars?
This is the two point three, two, four, nine, one, forty-three of the standard IDA, and then I didn't do the um, the ECC, the hundred thousand dollars progress.
Excuse me, can you just actually use the full title for stating?
The IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, portion of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, for the early childhood center, for the preschool, three of five of your all. That I could read after.
That language, then, are all these ones under, there's work to be done, has some of it been completed?
They're all underway, all of these projects are currently underway, but as you can imagine, looking at the kinds of things we're doing, the action plan actually exists, who takes two years to complete the project. So for example, if I could draw your attention to the um, literacy initiative. There are a number of smaller projects under our literacy initiative, that include professional development, um, data analysis, assessment, then bringing the features together to assess the data, provide interventions, materials, so that there really is, it really is a two-year project. So it has begun, they've, they've all begun, but it won't be completed, our plan is not to have it completed until um, June of two thousand and eleven.
And as a search for clarification, this is um, the funding for the federal government, um, and it don't have any of the FTEs for headcount involved in how we're utilizing?
Correct.
Can you tell me a little bit about these instructional assistive technology, is it something that would be useful only for specialization planning? Or would that be something that could lead over to the rest of our, assuming popular?
When we met as a community last spring, and we developed a consensus around this, we decided, uh, the phrase we used was a rising tide raises all ships. And in the land of um, assistive technology, instructional and assistive technology, much of what came through, the assistance of people with disabilities, has proven to be incredibly useful in instructional technology for all. Uh, many of the things you're all carrying around with you right now, originally came out of the assistive technology movement. Uh, PDA's and uh, voice to print software and a number of different things. So our plan is um, to utilize these dollars um, to readily provide universal design elements to all of our levels. So that if you go into an elementary school, there'd be a universal design element of assistive technology that children with disabilities will benefit from, and all children could access, um, whether it be hardware or software. So while we're coming through the door of assisting and improving access for children with disabilities, it is our absolute intent that all students will benefit from the access to those kinds of things.
So now the tougher questions, I'm looking at blue line here. Last year, the Board of Ed funded, moving up to state now, special education access cost rating at a hundred percent. However, the state has cut their reimbursement to seventy-seven percent, which is a little easier, uh, a thousand dollars plus shortfall?
Seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars shortfall, and it's just a paper right now.
So we are, it is permissive to use this money to cover that shortfall, however not ideal.
Correct.
And the original intent when this particular funding was passed by the federal government was to provide innovative programs for special education specifically?
Yes, it's the intent of um, the IDA is, and the intent of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act is to spur innovation. Under IDA, it was to develop and innovate and push education reform um, at a rate faster than most local education budgets would be able to do um, otherwise. So for example, our literacy initiative, to do what we're intending to do here, probably would have taken each of ten years rather than the two years we're doing. So imagine, from an order of magnitude, the number of students who will benefit. Now, within the next two years, will begin to reap the benefits of that kind of intensive literacy instruction. It would have taken perhaps ten years to get the, the staff, you know, in a typical district our size, to really get that level of professionals available and training out there, would have taken probably about ten years.
Okay, and, and I know you're anticipating on this question, um, up on page, that's really the alternative we stare at with this question. Page three, left of page, we have a shortfall, the central office of recognizing, uh, a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars moving forward this year because the state began to cut the number to five percent, but we're not sure what that number is exactly.
As we build this budget, the best we could do is build it based on where we are right now. So I built budget anticipating a less than eighty percent, it's something closer to seventy percent reimbursement rate. We won't know that until far, until well into the state budgeting process, which, if you know what that means now, they're still not really clear on this year's budget, so.
We still don't know from the last one.
Correct, so it is a moving target in terms of reimbursement rate. These, the nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars we're requesting, we're requesting seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of that nine hundred is related to the reimbursement issue. About two hundred thousand dollars is related to just overall increased costs, with some of our small increases. We negotiated here a small increase, but there were some increased costs in some of our contracted teams.
So as it relates to this, essentially, this is one of the very large ventures, it's nine or ninety-seven thousand dollars in our budget. The reality is, we are going to be receiving less funding from the state, especially if you're not in a situation like. We're recognizing that here now, to make sure that it's not going to be something we push forward and fall off down, yeah, next year. We could have used this other money to cover that, and quite frankly, increase the budget by a million dollars. In other areas, where I see the superintendent has, um, other priorities, that obviously we, we've worked on already, in the process of cutting, in the central office part of it. I think this is a prudent way to approach this, in that we have to recognize, and the, the, or the board members here recognize, that this nine or ninety-seven thousand dollars, we, we can't pretend that the states can do this one issue. We have to be responsible and take the best estimate in the central office to come to that, because I don't want to be sitting here next year with a million dollar shortfall and not have any way to fill that shortfall. I'm also very enthusiastic about one here in terms of things that we're pretty good at doing, and uh, the actual campaign is, is fun, so. I think that, that's one area that, that's one of the things that we're exploring. Should I keep going, or do you want to move on?
You know what I think would might be helpful, because we did it the other night, if, if it's operational, perhaps we go around the table to discuss operational, and then go around the table again for the capital non-recurring, um, I, I think that might, I think, help for you, for everyone, is that okay?
Yeah, and that's got more operational, and we got, what, like the apple, or?
No, 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 don't, don't keep going, thank you.
So, um, now as it relates to this page 277, I do have some concerns, we have a hundred and forty, four thousand and thirty-four dollars, which is one of the some of those IDA from last year that is not being subtracted out of top of our budget. We do however have, Mrs. Leonardi was high enough to show me which of these items on this page go directly to the town versus which come the Board of Ed. So if I look at, S F funds, the ARRA stabilization and grants and ARRA stabilization government services, that comes with the Board of Ed, on page 277, and then go up to page two. I see that five hundred and twelve thousand, one sixty-eight, subtract it out from the overall budget. This is probably going to be a silly question, but I learned early on, it was, uh, the budget total, that being the present, is not the one forty-five, three oh eight, five nine three, but actually the one forty-four, seven nine six, four two five? So how come we're subtracting that five hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the overall budget, but we're not subtracting the other items that fall below the revenue designated for specific programs that comes right to the Board of Ed from the budget?
I guess the easiest answer is, that is the only money that we have the discretion of spending against our operating budget. The other grants that you can see on page 277, and if you'll notice the note at the end, uh, at the bottom of the page, in all cases, revenue designated for specific programs are expended according to the requirements of the programs. These grants are applied for, um, there is, there are very strict guidelines, as to what we can ask for, and then there's an approval process, and we must spend money for the way we get written the grant and the way the program is written. That's also the way it's audited. That five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that's, that's our S F fund, is, is a new thing to us, this is the first year that we received it, and we have the guarantee that we will be able to get them next year. It is money that comes directly to us, it does not go to the town, and we can use it to offset operational costs, that's what that money is only doing. So that's why, that's the only one that you would see listed as being able to reduce our operating budget.
But as Mrs. Leonardi just pointed out, we were able to reduce our operating budget by some, by thousands while we're using ARRA IDA Part B.
We did not reduce our operating budget, we were able to recoup from a lack of reimbursement. The operating budget remains the same as we budgeted last year. We can get the reimbursement.
Again, we're still going back.
So.
Let me ask a question, Dick Nwieri. All these line items, I think you gave this to us on our Friday back, I apologize. We had a, we had a headcount of fifty-two, right?
Right.
So these grants represent fifty-two FTEs to the district?
Yeah, among many other things that are included, right, so it's, it's not all for staff.
So if I go to page two oh three, I believe this was lined out. The actual number of employee, the actual, the actual number of full-time equivalents that are receiving paycheck in the federal public school system is fourteen hundred and sixteen, been changed, but not thirteen sixty-four?
Which, I'm sorry, tell me where you are right now?
On that, on that page two oh three, and adding fifty-two to the bottom left-hand column, under grand totals, actual FTEs and one item.
Yes, that is correct.
So. Why are we talking there, we don't take care?
This is our operating budget that is funded from town sources, this does not include the grants are in addition to it, and the FTEs are in addition to it. But we are not asking the town for those fifty-two positions, we get that through designated funding for groups and such accounts, as they are identified on page two seventy-seven.
So, if all that funding would dry up, what can we do with those fifty-two people?
We would have to absorb them into our operating budget.
So, do you share the rest of the board? I think this is a discussion that we need to have, probably not for this year, but for, we are financing a large number of headcount, and I'm not sure the proper way, in a county perspective, to improve it, but I think we need to be able to track that. From a governance perspective, it's our responsibility as a board to ensure that, that we have people that have obligations to them, that come under our burden. I'm not sure exactly the right way to do that, but what I do know is that I would be a lot more comfortable if I saw at the bottom of this column, the number of people that are. if I saw at the bottom of this column the number of people that are employing, so that, for example, we should be asking Mrs. Nash, or the superintendent, um, are we following those form of course segments? Make sure we're getting them, but from an oversight perspective, my biggest concern here is that if the economy continues to go in the wrong direction, as wealthy or the community is considered wealthy, we will be among the first to see the funds by, I don't know, that's the thing we can address here in this budget. This is going to disagree with me, but I would like to see that go back to the finance committee, the policy committee to look at how we accrue this, move it forward, and demonstrate it to the board and rest of the town.
Mr. McCullough?
Hi. What, what, I'm just curious, what do you suggest? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if you're just working in government, I know that grants are a fact of life for every municipality and that many employees, it's a fact of life, are paid for in the grant process. And you're right, there's always the possibility that grants must have been dried up. I'm not counting the county, so... But I don't, I don't, I don't understand what the problem is. We designate where our grant fundings in this budget, we designate specifically what is being paid for by the town of Faircove through the town funds that we're going to seek every year. So is the question, is the question simply, if God forbid these grants dry up, how are we going to deliver the program against our lack of better work?
I think that that's a big part of it, Mr. McCullough. In terms of, if God forbid these grants dry up, it's going to be our responsibility to go in front of the boards of this town and say, you've got fifty-two employees that are surprised funding, I prefer that that not to be a surprise. And I'm not saying this is a surprise per se, but I'd love to have this laid out in a way where it's clear what our exposure is. And I think it will make us all more diligent to make sure that we're getting those grants or getting something in place for those grants if they're not there. I know the central office works very hard, and it should be lauded for the job they're doing, bringing these millions of dollars in town. We really should, I think, against this tremendous effort, and it reflects the quality of people we have. And this is no reflection on our team, and I just think that from the government's perspective, we need to have a handle on that particular piece and understand what our exposure is in terms of the way because it's going to really impact our ability to deliver the program.
Dr. Clark, would it be possible, we actually have grants in here, in the amount, but when it is a, if your program dashes site what it is paid for? And in our document, we have, oftentimes in our documents, we have information in more than one place. So can we have the grants and what they pay for on our page, where it's currently our page two seventy-seven? But also, when you go through other portions of the document, when you're looking, for instance, the number of employees, we should cite in that section how many employees we have with a notation of how they are being paid for. That way, as people are going through it, they will be able to, as Mr. Carey's saying, track it, but we will be very specific of how it is being funded.
I don't want to respond for Mrs. McLean. I'm looking at page two seventy-seven. I'm not sure how to add another column. I'm making the font a lot smaller.
Mr. Carey, I am thinking, Mrs. McLean, and maybe he could not clarify what he's looking for.
And again, as Mr. McCullough said, I'm no accountant either, but, you know, I've had experience with this, and this is why I feel so important. Working in channels in the past, market development funds that came from my employees and are going to become, give us employees with the funding for a year or two, and all of a sudden we have eight more employees that show up in my operating budget that they're not funding anymore, but they were part of our company now. And that's the type of thing you have to be aware of when you're taking these months. I'm kind of old fashioned with a county perspective, but if you get revenue in, I would think that would be in the top line. We subtract it out because people think, I don't want to have to care where the money comes from. Taxpayer money, rent money, we've got revenue in, revenue out. You've got a top line that's whatever it is, one fifty million dollars, subtract out my grants and anything else that we've got a great job getting, and that's a bottom line that I have to ask for with tax.
Rather than add it to page two seventy-seven, what I would suggest is that you have the number of teachers. And we would show how many are funded, and we'll do this year, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. How many are funded from the operating budget? How many are funded, and you want us to name the grants in which they're funded? And we'll do the same to paraprofessionals.
Thank you. That would be enormously helpful, and I apologize, I didn't mean to imply it had to be in two seventy-seven. I would just use it as a frame of reference. That, that I think actually would be very helpful. Mrs. Lee Artis?
The only thing I think we need to be careful of, remember, is that you're very correctly. We have to be really careful. Some of the grants we are applying for have very specific rules, like under IDEA, there is a rule about supplementation, not supplantation. So we couldn't, as a district, without risking that federal money, say, well, you're getting two point four million dollars in IDEA, so let's cut the operating budget by two point four. We have obligations under each and every entitlement grant. We sign statements of assurances. So I just want to be careful that we don't leave the public with an impression that we could simply take that dollar figure, subtract it from the total dollar figure, and be okay. We couldn't.
I'm actually thinking, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, yeah, just to be clear, I'm not suggesting on line, because I know at this point it's not realistic. I get that, we've everybody said that. But what I am concerned about, and I don't want to risk any of our grant funding, but you guys work so hard to get. What I am concerned about is understanding what the exposure is if things don't go right. The state's a great example. It's lost seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with the money which it is worth what we're going to get last year. And now it's costing us in the innovative program. I don't want to see that happen again. I want to understand what we're getting into, even when we're taking these grants. Because, hey, if we're taking these grants, but they're requiring us to put butt, for example, and I know this isn't the case. If this grant that we were just discussing required that you hire ten employees and then you have to pay for them, we probably wouldn't want to do that unless it was a very good reason to. But we don't want to create a fund, and I think that we've done a good job of not doing that, but I think the board needs to have oversight of that in terms of understanding what our exposure is.
And I was going to say, actually, on page two seventy-seven, on the bottom, there is a notation. And actually, the way this is structured actually established that already. So I do appreciate that you were already getting in that direction. Anyway, yes, Dr. Clark?
On Friday, we sent a staff funding report. And so it says, for example, for this school year, nine hundred and one point seven teachers are funded out of the district operating budget. Eighteen point eight teachers are funded out of grants. For a total this year of ninety, nine hundred and twenty point five. So what Mr. Carey is asking for is you want to know which grants?
There's a couple of things actually related to this piece of paper. Yes, I'd like to know how the teachers are, how we're paying for all our teachers. So if we have fourteen hundred and...
Well, we're paying for nine hundred and one point seven out of our operating budget.
So just looking at in the macro, if we are paying for fourteen hundred and sixteen point four five employees, and fifty-two of them are being funded by external sources, I'd understand how that money's flowing. And more importantly, looking into two thousand ten, eleven, we don't have those FTEs in the line. So for example, a type of question, of the thirteen hundred and ninety-six employees that the district is requesting, how many of those fifty-two might be being absorbed back in? While we can be pushing fifty-two forward, we don't quite know what the rent money is, I understand that, but again, this is a question of, we want to make sure we're delivering the same program to the children. Those are the types of top-line things that I think we need to have a transparent version of.
Mr. Carey, you...
Oh, myself, huh?
Mr. McClean?
I actually have a question about capital outlay on page two sixty-one. This one's, know why Boring McKinney are funded at all levels from the other elementary schools?
Because they're newer, and so when they were outfitted with their furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, they had a lot of new materials brought into the school. And so what we're doing is bringing the other schools up to a level with them.
So, so how, how do you determine capital outlay? Is that done?
The principals and the teachers do that.
No, I'm sorry. How do you determine the capitation for the dollar amount that goes there?
We do that by level. The elementary schools get a certain amount, the middle get a certain amount, the high schools get a different amount.
But how do you come up with that number? How do you, how did you determine if they're getting five thousand for every different pupil? Is it...
It's per school. And the number used to be much higher when the economy was much better. And we've had to roll it back, roll it back, roll it back. And when we had to take kids during the year, some years we would meet with the principals and they would say, don't take money from class size guidelines, we need materials, take it from capital outlay. So we try and give them something so they can replace equipment, and then they decide how they're going to spend it.
So at some point, at some point, you think, maybe it was done by per pupil? Is that what you're now?
No, no.
You just arbitrarily came up with it?
Right.
And you wanted to give them, and every year it's done?
We looked at what they were asking, what they had been asking for, the types of things they would ask in their budget requests, how much we were able to fund in a good economy, knowing that they still need to replace items. We want to give them something, but we reduced it greatly and then held it still for those three years.
My next question is on page two of seven. Item three oh one. Other instructional services? Um, forty, forty-eight, forty, fifty, and forty, fifty-five. How do you, how do you determine that, those numbers as well? Why among some of those per pupil?
Forty-eight is the early literacy fund, the agency that there's zero funding in that line. In previous years, the district held about ten thousand dollars aside to assist the elementary schools who remain in need of early literacy tutoring. We haven't been funding that the last two years. Four oh four.
Four, four oh four eight. Showing an increase.
Four oh four, I think, four is the one we're on, sorry.
Yeah.
Four oh four is the early literacy fund. That funds the early literacy tutors of each of the elementary schools.
Oh, that's for the actual...
Yes, they're two of these. I was looking at the micro. The forty, forty fifty is the curriculum development line, and that's a district-held line. Each of the program implementation accounts in fourteen program areas build in funds to renew and revise the curriculum every year. This amount is a district account. It shouldn't need extra dollars for that purpose.
So if we aren't moving forward with any new curriculum issues, how do you come up with the thirty thousand dollars?
Well, actually, we have a five-year cycle for curriculum renewal in all fourteen areas. And so we don't really see what the initiatives are. Each year, when we prepare the budget, I need with each of the program leaders, the curriculum board leaders, to go through the levels to see what their needs are, and it's different every year. So they build into their program implementation dollars, PD dollars, as well as curriculum development dollars, depending on where you are in the cycle.
Exactly. We'll be seeing the elementary physical education curriculum next year, the elementary health curriculum, the music curriculum.
So it's not new programs that exist, that you're rolling through?
It's the revision of our current programs.
New curriculum will be rolling.
And forty, fifty-five, the student achievement intervention. For years, that was funded at about fifty thousand dollars. Last year, this year, we rolled it back to forty thousand dollars. That, the purpose of those dollars is spread across all schools, K through twelve. It's a district account for individual students, for groups of students, that the teams at the schools have determined need some extra support in any of the academic areas. We're noticing this year that we're asking for a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase in that. The reason is, up against our scientific research-based initiative, one of the ways that we identify kids is through universal screenings. So we are looking at some technology, blue ribbon, and aims web across K through eight. And that sixty-eight thousand dollars is to pay for those screening tools to catch kids early so that they can intervene. And we put it in this line because it's the intervention line.
So that's for systems or people? Is it for systems?
It's systems, uh, systems for assessment, and then the data that we get from the people will then, of course, interpret the data, analyze, and put intervention.
The teachers channel this.
Okay, and that rolls out the whole. My other question has to do with, um, page two oh nine, forty-eight, eleven, fire alarm testing. Two oh nine?
Yes, this is something the fire marshal has indicated that we must do every month in every school. It's going to require completely shutting down the technology in the school. And this is what Mr. Cullen anticipates is going to cost us to help the people there. Maybe make any repairs if we need to make them.
I just can't get my head around thirty thousand dollars to shut that fire alarm off. Put it back on.
Actually, a low number.
Walk me through that.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a local regulation that we shut down the school's power and confirm with a licensed electrician's report that all of our lighting and fire markets are working in the same place. As you know, almost all our school buildings, a lot of roads in the town areas have emergency lighting. It doesn't work unless the power goes off. And they need to make sure that it's going to work when the power does go off. So the new regulation has to be tested monthly in every school. This is a low number because we're doing it internally with our licensed electrician. He's going to do it with overtime, and cheaper than we can do it with an outside company. And he's a licensed electrician, he can fill out the paperwork and file a report with the fire marshal. We met with him, and he's very happy with that. So it takes about half an hour to do an elementary school, an hour to do an elementary school.
We can't do it, it has to be overtime because we can't do it with teachers and kids in the building.
That's the old understanding. Right, so this is, while the school is closed, you're going to take the whole system down, turn it to the house, or sort of lights go on?
Once a month.
And turn it on and check every light that's on.
And you have to do that every month in every school, the whole district, for twelve months, ten months?
Every month, every year.
This is a local?
Yeah. Yeah, we used to do it, we used to do it by annualizing. We used to do it twice a year. But the regulation actually says we have to do it monthly. Because the systems do die out, you know, bulbs go and the lights, and we don't want to have a large emergency and people not being able to get out, it's sort of egress connected.
Essentially, we've got an unfunded budget.
So did this is, actually require a certified electrician to do it? In other words, would our custodian do it with the oversight administered? Do we have to have an overtime electrician to fill this function?
No, this requires a licensed electrician because the form has to be filled out, you have to sign it with his license data. It's a whole big...
I bet the only thing happy about this is our electrician.
Except for all these...
Someone asked, does someone from the study department obviously, or is it... The electrician. We got an electrician's helper. He's a journeyman. He's never got his license, but even if he's there, he has to be certified by a licensed electrician. We did look at doing it outside. It's a perfect program for flow into our PM. And we researched some companies, like the borrower on their sort of license, and we got the low bid with their hourly wage. They were in the forty-five, fifty range for the year. This first year, we'll monitor it and...
Let's see what happens for mention. My second question is, I know there's a, or is there a private security firm that checks our buildings? What is MetroCard?
Yeah, there's a firm that we have that comes in after hours and weekends that schools don't have a reservation or occupancy and verifies a walkthrough. They come through and check the boiler room, if there's heat and cooling in the school. They check windows and doors to make sure everything's locked and sealed, no intrusions. And then they also notice any emergencies and can notify our maintenance managers to call and report the people. We were doing that with our overtime facility in nineteen. We were spending a lot more than this company, you're quite certain, a great company, first when they came in. This is our second year with them, and we're very happy.
Where is that in the budget?
This is actually on one seventy-one because I do have a question, everybody, which is talking about student achievement, safety and security. Page one seventy-one, four, one, one, zero, is about two-thirds of down on the page. It's people's time to plan it. Is that what we're talking about?
You'll have to give me a minute. I'll find it in the description.
If you look it up and just let us know, that would be great. But you've noticed the significant savings in doing this as opposed to what you're doing?
Yes, our overtime has been out, and the company has done a very good job in picking up plumbing leaks and emergency voiders that we're running on weekends when we're in the building.
All right. And then my last question has to do with the technology and the smart boards. I'd ask for information on who has training and the wait lists. I was looking for more specific information in terms of who's waiting for smart boards in each building. Do we have that information yet, or is that...
Since you, the aggregate told us on Friday, Friday night, I asked the building principals if they would pull their staff members. I asked the principals if they would pull their staff members for this information. We have about five hundred and forty-five teachers who have had some level of training. At this point, we have one hundred and sixty-seven of those teachers have smart boards in their classroom and are very easy access to them. And another two hundred and ninety-nine who say they have been trained but do not have a smart board.
So you have about three hundred and seventy-eight teachers with training but don't have boards?
Yeah, and the numbers are from the principals pulling themselves. There's some variation happening.
And what about, I'm specifically interested in what buildings these teachers are in? What's the need for building for a smart board?
Well, I'm certain to send you, I have a spreadsheet from the principals getting a building by those.
Okay. Yeah, maybe some of that's a job right there is going to be great. That's all I have for now.
I have several questions as well. Dr. Clark, when we, you would like enough to give us an array of where smart boards currently are in the district? And my question is, I know that we've had different funds that have paid for those. It is my understanding, regardless of the funding, that once they are purchased in a school, they are owned by the district?
Right.
The reason I ask this is, when I look at it, there's a disparity in terms of the assignment of smart boards versus population. And what I'm wondering, and it ties in with what Mrs. Altuso was saying, one is whether we have staff that are trained and also are interested, but also when I look at the spread of those, it's not consistent with the school population? So I was wondering if there was any plan to address that?
There is a plan. It's not good to move a smart board, especially to move it, you know, from a school like Dwight across the district. They don't travel well. But Mrs. Nash and Mr. Bird, working with the technology committee and the principals, have a plan to achieve greater equity. So based on how many smart boards we can acquire in this budget, it will be based on teachers already trained, who just wants smart boards, number they already have in their building. So that's how we're going to address it, rather than start moving them around because you lose usage of the board if it gets moved too much. So it's to put new boards to make it equitable.
Then perhaps we, as a district, should consider our practice of when someone wants to do a purchase, that it is clear about where it should be assigned so that we don't end up, because it is, there's clearly an inequity. And there also is an issue relative to the number of students in some of these sites where there are many and there aren't that many students. And to me, that is, as a district, we're supposed to be producing, providing equitable resources, and this is not. So I would like to see that addressed. Mr. McCullen?
Yeah, I just, your comment, question, when you said if someone is going to make a smart board purchase, who are you referring to?
I think we've had groups that are interested in doing it. I believe some of the, and Dr. Clark, you actually can answer instead of the nine because you know who paid for it better than I do.
We've had some parents donate a smart board to a school. We've had PTA groups purchase smart boards for their schools.
I guess we'll comment, I would imagine that if PTA, Jenning School bought a smart board, that they would anticipate that a smart board would stay at Jenning School's ownership to acquire something like that. So I think the bottom line, I appreciate what you're saying, this is a brand is that we need to be as equitable as possible with respect to all of our technologies. You know, this is, we get into this situation where, and we've had discussions about this ourselves, where PTAs want to do what they think is the right thing for the particular schools. And quite frankly, I understand that, and I think it is the right thing, where they want to buy a piece of technology for a school that can't be funded in the budget because of difficult times. And there's no clear-cut answer with respect to how to deal with it. I would hate to handcuff PTAs. On the other side of the coin, you know, some PTAs can be more than others. And again, I guess just whatever we have to keep our eyes on, make sure we're distributing our resources as equitably as possible.
Just as long as PTAs understand that, I think that would also be very, very helpful because there perhaps going to be a misunderstanding when they purchase something like that, that it doesn't necessarily mean, and it certainly, I mean, quite honestly, we probably wouldn't be where we are without a lot of the efforts of the PTAs. There's no question of that. But I want to be sure that when we're doing it, we're not actually creating a disparity in doing so.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Moving on the subject of smart boards, I understand where you're going with equity. I have a different question. I'm more concerned about what we're doing when, I understand that teachers want them and everyone's excited about them. But can you tell me, do we have any smart board programs that have been built into any of those levels of curriculum by the curriculum leaders?
It would be better if a teacher who's really adept at using a smart board answered this question. The smart board itself wouldn't have a program. The smart board is used to improve and enhance student achievement in the grade level and the subject area the teacher's teaching. It brings a multitude of resources to a teacher's fingertips within seconds. So for example, a teacher doing graphing at the high school level, rather than have to have kids, you know, in the olden days when I was in school, have graph paper and draw the graph. It's instantaneously in front of the kids. When the teacher changes the equation, the graph changes. When students are trying to solve a problem and they go up and use the smart board, the information is automatic, it changes. It's a learning tool that is, that helps the teachers bring the instruction to the kids in a way that's really relevant to the kids. There are pieces of software you can use with smart boards in all of the curriculum areas. But I don't want people to think the smart board is a program that you turn on and...
Now, I have a crazy question for you, and I have to ask it a minute. Are there things that we're doing with smart boards to deliver the curriculum that have been standardized across grade, across curriculums, where we say, hey, you know, this is a better way to deliver, we did an American study, so this is a better way to deliver this particular math segment? How do we, how are we utilizing the smart board? And is that something that's being streamlined across grades, across schools, or are we still not there?
Well, I think we're in the process of being, this is new technology as well. I think the math department is probably going to host ramp up as we do standardization to use in terms of delivering certain curricular concepts. In the curriculum documents themselves, we put this out last week, actually, there are sections of the document that are set aside for technology resources. And one of the great things about smart board technology is there are a myriad of available lessons and resources online that teachers can go to and actually just bring right to the smart board to enhance the curriculum. So the idea is that with the curriculum format being that it is, the teachers would work to kind of standardize how they're using the lesson, but at the same time, what's great about it is that they can individualize that they want to, they can choose the technology or the resources perhaps offline related to their content that's going best in the needs of those particular kids. So we're in the process, I would say, so not there.
So we don't actually have, for example, a recommendation to use this lesson for all fourth grade math?
You know, it would be difficult to put that into the curriculum, that's something that everyone needs to do because we don't have smart boards everywhere. But certainly recommendations in sites that teachers have found really beneficial, yes, those do go in as resources that teachers can tap into. If a teacher has a smart board in their room, that's great because they can tap her into it, but it's not something we can make.
And let me try to change before I'm more aware of what I'm talking about. Do we, with the hundred and sixty-one plus smart boards that we have in place now, do we have any measures or metrics that we can bring to the rest of the town that say, hey, you know, we've been using these hundred and sixty-one smart boards in various places. We really would like to standardize the curriculum so that we can have all the fourth grades utilize these lesson plans with smart boards that would help increase achievement. But do we have any measure to show what the achievement has been, achievement has been increased in our school's...
We are not able, because we haven't done control studies, and there are so many variables. What we can do is analyze, Mr. Boyd will get his hands on it, there's an article by Marzana who's one of the leading researchers in education. And his, the latest study he did showed that classrooms where there are smart boards, student achievement went up on average sixteen percent. And he is a leading researcher. It would be done in, you know, a controlled setting. We're finding reports from teachers that students are more engaged, that it's easier for them to adapt lessons to the individual needs and the needs of their classes. We can get anecdotal information, but we haven't done a control study.
Thank you.
So if I heard that, through the chair, Dr. Zado, I'm sorry. So if I heard that correctly, if you have a smart board in your classroom, your teacher's using a smart board, you have the extra potential of getting additional resources?
We do.
Yeah, technology resources.
So the flip side of that is if your teacher is not using the smart board, it's kind of missing out?
Yes. And I would also say that teachers are sharing the smart boards as well. I do know there's one smart board, say, for example, in third grade classroom, other third grade teachers are trying to access that as well. So they can do what we have, but I would say, yes, they have access to more resources.
And teachers are feeling that, the teachers are asking their administrators, when can we get those smart boards?
So going back to the equity issue. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Zado, if I actually had called you in, would you be kind of, just to provide a board with an update about the new funding regarding the gifted program for the middle school?
Sure.
Please. Oh, certainly. Speaking to a little closer to the...
The central office met to discuss the thirty thousand dollars that is currently in the budget for gifted programming at the middle school level. And looking through how money has been used and what we would see used for in the future, we are reallocating it based on the populations of each of the schools because our three middle schools have, you know, different population numbers. And so making sure that the dollars follow in those circumstances.
Thank you very much. I really do appreciate that, so you will. You also made, and I think you explained, you and Mrs. Icono, I had asked about the achievement. So the student achievement account, and that you had mentioned earlier, Mrs. Icono, but I don't believe there's correspondence in the information reflecting the addition of the SRBI in this document. So as this is adjusted and the board approves, you will be including that information as well?
Yes.
And the other, one of the other questions I had has to do also with the security. If you go back to page one seventy-one, which is what I was referring to, thank you, Dr. Zado.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, for allowing me to use it for here. With safety and security, I think it's on page one seventy-one, it's, the title is part-time employment. I'm asking about four, one, one, zero. Would you please speak to the proposed ten, eleven, twenty-eight, six thousand dollars with that as payment?
That's it. Going back to what you're found, if you go to page one seventy-seven, it has a description that, for security hourly. This account provides for hourly services. If the contract with the company is hourly, we don't, we don't know exactly how often they're going to come, and so we talk with them monthly. We have to look at what reservations are in the schools, what schools already have custodians in them till eleven, eleven thirty P M., what weekends we're scheduled for reservations and activities, and then we back out what schools don't have anything going on, and then we let this company know they need to come in and do a service at that school. And I believe it started, I'll look it up for you, I believe when we first started, it was running forty, forty-five thousand dollars, so it hasn't been done.
On page one seventy-two then, number three oh nine, security services and expenses. We have two hundred thousand dollars. I do know on staff, we have some who have said safety and security. So what I'm wondering is what this is covering. Further on page one seventy-seven, we have security services listed. But I guess, just want you to understand, is this part of the sub, I don't know what this is for.
Yeah, if you go through the description of page one seventy-nine, it gives you a little bit of a breakdown under section three oh nine. Under section 309, safety and security provides funding for handheld communication devices, walkie-talkies and cell phones, immediate communication. Other expenditures are when we hire special duty police, video cameras, electronic equipment. Security locks are funded here.
I can certainly appreciate the special duty police officers, but I thought we already have video cameras on our buildings. And I thought that the people that would be doing this, particularly if there is a subcontract that doesn't actually already have that as part of the contract, they have that equipment? A walkie-talkie, the cell phone?
The walkie-talkies are for all our maintenance custodial staff. Those are running around from building to building to the base maintenance plan at 418 Mill Street.
So basically, I guess...
For the security companies.
Okay, so is that a maintenance portion of it, or is it a security?
It's a mixed use of multiple things, as you can see from the explanation. You know, it covers the handheld walkie-talkies. It covers when the schools or when central office needs to hire the police. We cut that way back now and it's normally the first week of school. There's a kid leaving, there's a tough street area, we watch the roads. There's new parents coming with kids, beginning of summer school. Video cameras is when we have an emergency that we need to set up a camera to watch something for a short period of time. And then have it run back to see what's happening in that certain area of the school. It includes a lot of detail about it.
I appreciate where you're going with that.
And then certainly, a big piece of it is part of our PM program, the security locks that we're taking. You'll know that where we had a lot of affordability to the annexed buildings, we did a spike card and key access on some of the doors for the foot running back and forth in the staff. That comes out of this account.
Thank you. I do have another question. We were talking earlier about how many retirees we have to date. I believe we have three, but we're budgeting for 10. And again, do we have a plan for what we will do and where we will call the other funding in the event that we do not have 10?
We are sincerely hoping we will have 10. Mrs. Fitzgerald is almost, she almost gets 1,000 every year. One year she said 17 and we got it, and one year she said 14 and we got it. So we're hoping for 10, and if we don't, we'll have to come back to the board with recommendations as to where we will get the money from.
Where we usually are at this time of year? We are. Thank you. I also have some other questions that that should be ongoing, kept on recurring. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Owen.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the outside maintenance company, did we strike out anyone in the US custodian contract and make them work coming in on the weekends?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just clarifying, thank you. Next is also about the SMARTboards. Does this technology change that they're going to come obsolete in a few years?
I can't imagine that because it's actually, and please, I asked the teachers to forgive me and I will oversimplify this. In a way, it is like a large computer screen. And so the software may change, but these SMARTboards are going to last, especially if we don't move them around too much. Which is why we'll actually move a class in and out rather than use the SMARTboard across the hall. How do we use them? And the software that we use can change, but the SMARTboard should have a good life expectancy.
And also, you know, I heard a discussion about the SMARTboards, and we're talking about equity and PTAs. And, you know, we've been talking about this from the beginning of time, starting with playgrounds. So, you know, and I really think that a board, this sitting board, maybe we can look at it in policy and come up with something because, you know, when you're talking about using school districts and town people's money to make it equitable because some PTAs are funded, I don't think that's fair. So I think that's something that the policy committee maybe should look at. Okay. I also want to thank you for restoring the guidance department to 10 and a half months from 10 months from last year. And my only other question is, at the last meeting, I asked to ask the teachers to the staff to, I just wanted to know what percentage that would make, or 3.75 or up to?
The cost for the three FTEs, including that fifth, would be $202,773. That's how we estimate it. One FTE is 67,500.
Sally, end of this.
So what was the answer?
I'll give you that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get that out of the question. That's okay. And while we're doing that, for those of you who are in the room here, the reason why I asked for that information is based on class size guidelines. We had eight classes that looked like they were at the cusp of going over and tried that line of possibility of collapsing for the correct exam. Thank you.
No way, as soon as we have the...
So the point 1.4, 1.45, so about the 1.4%?
So it'd be 3.89.
Do you mind if I ask, if I have a question, because I see there's Mr. Kelly.
Actually, I think I would be interested in the answer, so I should... He was in a lot of time in the...
First, I want to preface my statements, sorry, over the last few days. I think I've talked to Mr. Perry more than I would about this. Not about, no, I've talked more about this. Talk a lot about things, in particular, the Strackfield, Strackfield Elementary School's security and safe area, contracted material, labor for $100,000 out of his hand. And I've come to the understanding as to why Mr. Cohen has requested that. And on the other side of the coin, after speaking with Mr. Kelly, I understand, and being a member, not a member, of the liaison of the Strackfield School Building Committee, where the building committee is coming with respect to that. So with the chairman's permission, what I would like is to give Mr. Cohen a few minutes to explain why he's requesting these funds. And then allowing Mr. Kelly, as the representative of the building committee, the chairman of the building committee, to, to give some insight from his perspective. And I think, hopefully, that we're going to be able to come to some type of a meeting of the minds and try to get them the same things from their perspective. And I don't think we are. So with your permission, I'll ask.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, listen to that. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you very much. As I said to you all last week, there was two reasons. From past experience, when we've done renovate large renovation projects at the two high schools and Thomas and Middle School, we found that when the building got filled with contractors and wires started getting caught and things getting moved around and then things being put fast related to security a little broken, so there were a lot of problems. There were things not working after the last, there was a lot of fear, which wasn't worth, a lot of cameras weren't pointing the right direction. We had to fund a lot of money unexpectedly to go back in with a local lender and fix a lot of it. Now, on the high school level, the man, we have in excess of 52 cameras. A lot of machines and a lot going on, so it was catastrophic. The middle school was pretty empty. We're not assuming that the elementary school would be that bad, but we did figure that there would be some of that done that we would have to go back in. So that was part of it. The other part, I think, was just that we had an information technology discussion to get information in writing to answer some questions from the building committee that would be given to the project team. And in that, there wasn't a lot of security questions covered, or that security work would be performed. We didn't know clearly if that was related to existing stuff in the building, and it getting removed or relocated, or they renovated, or if it was the new stuff in the new building, or a combination of both. I think we reached out to them and what was going on, the budget was getting built, we probably had to put a place over it.
Mr. Kelly, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, Kelly, the chairman of Strackfield Elementary School Building Committee. I wasn't clear on why there was, yeah, I saw a flurry of activity in emails and phone calls from the public. Our budget is, and part of our scope is to do security. It is not presently part of the architect's scope, which is a different distinction. However, I talked to him today, he said, we're moving the panels. We have that on the drawings, we have the wiring to hook it back up. We're relocating the equipment, whatever cameras that are, wiring needs to be relocated, that's on the documents. I do have, 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 in the past, I've already asked Mr. Morvino either in email form or at a meeting saying, what do you need for security? I mean, could we scope, are we adding cameras? I mean, if we're just doing some additional door contacts, on the addition, we've already got, I've already instructed the architects some two months ago to take care of that. So I wasn't clear on, I can, I understand that Mr. Cohen is gun-shy with regards to having loose ends, but I can pretty much assure the board that we're just doing the first part now. Won't really hit the ground running until the second part goes in and they start moving admin sometime next year, which is after September of 2010. And that's when the second half, the second addition is done. So we're really looking at door contact adding to the equipment, which is all functioning and the security system works over there. We are going to reuse the equipment that's there, the cameras. If we have to add a camera for our request through Mr. Morvino, then do we need additional equipment for that? I think that is a well out of our purview, and we would handle that, but I don't know what the need for the $100,000 was. But if we run into issues next year unforeseen and our budgets are limited, I may be back to say, please help us with some of this in your current budget.
Thank you very much for coming this evening and telling me. The Dwyane Boardman is having a question, so if not, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Matola.
And thank you, Mr. Kelly, for coming out this evening.
Yeah, and I appreciate Mr. Ball coming out, and I appreciate Mr. Ken. And I understand both sides here, I understand Mr. Cohen's concern. The last thing he wants to happen is that there's a problem here for now. And we look at it and we say, why didn't you mention this to us during the budget season? So thank you, Mr. Cohen, and thank you, Mr. Kelly. Hopefully, we can get this taken care of over the next year. Thank you.
Mr. Matola, still your turn in terms of operation, do you have any questions? Okay, zoom it down.
In terms of operation, I don't have any questions. And we got the budget, I really went through it, especially the areas that you had assigned to my committee. And what I found was that of all the categories I was looking at, oh, the majority of them went down. Some of the amount that the central office was requesting had to go down. So I think they've done a great job of trying to put this together. Any questions I had were already answered by, or asked by other people last week or already tonight, so I'm happy with the question and I'm going to pass.
Thank you very much, Mr. Owen.
I don't have anything either from the operational, except to say that I'm a big fan of the SMARTboards. I really do think they improve education. My son has one in his class, I think he had one last year as well. They're very excited when they get to use it. I've seen it in action, and at first, I thought of other technology things, but I really think it's very cool. And the kids get excited and it engages them in a way that I think helps the education.
Mr. Owen, if you would like what we can do, since we finished with you, we can also start with you in terms of the capital non-recurring and anywhere on the table, if anyone's thinking.
So let's look at the Dwight Elementary School bathrooms. Again, I think one of the things we did in subcommittee was to try to spend a lot of time to cut things at a difficult year, especially given that we have Fairfield with the middle school project coming through, knock on wood. And we, to the great understanding, though disappointed that a couple of communities we've cut back on, Rutherford, we've cut back on, now we have a couple of others in the neighborhood. I actually think there that we take a look at the elementary school, Dwight Elementary School bathroom, I've talked about this a lot with other members of the committee. I'm really curious of why we absolutely think we need it right now, because I think it's something that can wait. Is there a question? I'd just like to hear your comment again, Mr. Owen.
We're actually walking also at page four, people are starting to look forward.
I think from the last meeting, I sent a letter to the board with some backup, because I needed to, I went right back to my office to find out what other schools we did bathrooms at and were covered on the non-recurring. And I thought that they weren't. I had some old mills from years where we moved it in as non-recurring and we took it back out, but before it actually came to this board, or the previous boards, they weren't, they worked under the board. So I sent a letter out to all of your colleagues that, and I missed hope. I could go right back and look at that. The bathrooms in general, we look at all of the schools as we walked around, and just like the window systems and the roofs and other things, bathrooms are original. They normally don't get touched. Even when you do renovation jobs, they don't. We did the two high schools, where the bathrooms weren't touched, and they're original. You know, they get some cosmetic upgrades, painting, or stealing lights, but they don't actually look at the plumbing. When we got approval to proceed with the bathrooms, we did do in elementary schools, and the contractors opened up the walls, we did find that a lot of the piping was rotting, rusting, leaking between the walls. It's been probably 60 years of this, the use of these bathrooms and by the amount of students and staff, it's heavy. So we set up the program to start looking at replacing the bathrooms. It's an excellent investment, I believe, I'll stand behind it. If we get 50, 60 years out of these new bathrooms and plumbing and fixtures and equipment there, and so bonding and plastic like that, I believe we get our money's worth. So we've done three or four elementary schools. Dwight got a post from last year deferred, and we wanted to see if it back in there. We'll see in the long range, if I can even forward, we even opened a high school level.
Can you explain to me about the, I believe it was last year's RTM that looked the same bathroom because it was on the budget last time as well?
Correct.
And how they came to their conclusion?
Remember, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that we were going to bring them up to code too, which is ADA, veteran disability. And the fact that Dwight isn't an ADA building, it's not 100% ADA. You all know Dwight has two levels and it has stairs. But in general, when we worked with the architect and the engineer on providing new bathroom upgrades at all the schools, one of the things we wanted to do was, of course, anywhere possible, bring them up to ADA compliant. It helps us with our recording to the state. We record every year, list of 51 questions on every building. One of those is related to how much of the buildings can be planted ADA in the state to help. Dwight is a fortunate one. We're also hopeful you'll see in our long range plan, when we want to hit to Dwight, we do want to put a connector to connect the U-shade and bring it up to code. You only need a lift at one end of the building to cover one of the stairways and bringing the whole building up to code, the ADA compliant. So we wouldn't be wasting any money by doing new bathrooms and bringing them up to code. So the discussion at the RTM level, I remember mostly those of how we have to do the bathrooms, Dwight is going to bring multi-DAI code when the building is an ADA. And I mean, we just hope that we have the full break of the year.
I guess that unless there's anything more about that, I was going to talk about the tallons in the school. The stairwreck treads and the risers, and the risers being a part of the stair?
Yes, and I didn't want you to think that this is the type of project where contractors are going to go in there and jackhammer out all the stairs. Right now, there is a final composite tread and riser that we moved on many years ago. My guess is it's got as best as containing material in it. So we're going to proceed to have it tested when we do this. to have it tested when we do this. The actual tread is a part you step on, and there's the part that, okay, so we're running up the stairs, so it's a one-piece composite. As I mentioned before, many years ago, it looked like the nosing was taking off. The tread is made up of a ten or twelve inch white space that you step on, the nosing sometimes had a stronger material installed because it gets more views. At one time, it's my belief that that was probably metal. That got removed, filled in with a cementitious material, and then it went to be covered over with this vinyl tread. That now is wearing real heavily, and the cementitious material has sunked a little bit, and you'll notice if you go on the stairs, back from stairwells, that they're pitched a little bit, so they're lying on the stairs. Let's see. The TMA has been on the, on our priorities for three years running now, and we're hopeful it might get picked up in the building committee renovation. It did, along with a few other things, a little too excessive, but we'd like to get back there. I also want to mention it's two and a half stairwells, two full stairwells that have this composite material, no smaller than a stairwell in the back, I got it for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lu, do you have any suggestions?
Along, Mr. Lu, my question, I went to Thomas on Friday and looked at the stair, Mr. Dawson. So, Mr. Cullen, you're saying that the, and we do need to fix them, by the way, to get rid of them, so, you're saying that when I get jackhammered out completely, my key concern with the stairs was, the treads are old and worn and all burnt, but they're not flat across the top, so...
Correct.
So, we've got six inches on a stair that you're stepping, and a lot of them halfway down, kind of pitch, its angle is like a twenty, thirty degrees. So, if you can imagine a herd of eleven-year-olds running down the stairs after class, they're expecting to hit something flat, hit something that's angled, we could have a safety, serious safety issue if that child get hurt. And so, my question is, is this one, are you going to fix that pitch problem? Or do you have to take the stairs out?
Yes, our intent is to take the vinyl off, the asbestos containing material, and it'll be done with air flares testing, and taken through proper gum. But, the contractors we talked to, we asked them to look into filling that nosing back in, or putting the metal piece back in, and then the popular product today is called ropey rubber. It's a, it's a great rubber product that they do tread and line it with their one-piece, so they don't come apart and not lose separately. They're used on a lot of stairwells, they get made of the pumps, the little two-inch pumps out of, and they wear very well.
So, I, I know what my comment was, looking at, and I can see where we could have a problem at a kid's age, going upstairs and groups, and first and foremost, my concern would be saving children, but I also would be able to board that self-protection, really, to help out, to be there.
Mr. Lu, do you have anything?
Oh, sorry, I can't. Sorry, not only, I just wanted to add, not only from a kid's standpoint, from some of our high heels, I've been down those stairs as well, and they're highly dangerous, and I would encourage the board to, to support this. It's just a very, very un... All of that, it's just very...
I think I spent around nine years with kids going through that building, so, yeah, it's a universal feeling, I was leaning forward, and I'm like, sure, just make it this.
Mr. Lu, do you have any further questions? Ms. Dale? Obviously, Mr. Lu and Mr. Kelly have been telling the chair of the board questions. And Mr. Matola?
Yeah, I just have a question on the Dwight situation. So, can you answer this general question? Dwight, Dwight is not ADA compliant, and have we ever had an occasion where a student who lives in the Dwight district was not, was not able to attend school because it's not aligned with the ADA?
Of course, but all ADA is partially compliant in the early days.
Partially compliant.
It's not zero compliant, not above and below zero compliant.
And Dwight that's not compliant is the bathrooms?
Part of that is.
Okay.
And if a student had to get up to the stairs, they'd have to walk outside the building with a ramp to get up to a back level, so they can't stay in this currently, which is why we're not particularly compliant. The code says, can't, can't have somebody who leave the building with a different door because they're going to get access.
Okay, so, so it's for a child who needs a ramp, that child has to keep going around the building, that child has to run around.
Well, they can get into a huge portion of the building in the ground level because the cafeteria is there, the main office is there, and some classrooms, but if they need to get up to the other levels, there's no lift or ramp or elevator.
One of the ways you could comply with that, well, now, being an elevator is to have a little lift. Okay, like Jennings has a lift, for example.
Yes.
It has a stair lift. We looked at an actual, um, adult lift, it would take up a room that's in our storage room, I believe there's a feature in there now, relocated into this room. It used to be a storage room right alongside the stairwell, and you get up to the second level, there was the, the original locking gate that came out of the wall, went across the corridor, and we'd take one of those out, relocate a panel, we'd get a door, it would be a lift, and we'd do a room, take a lift up to the next level, be able to get up.
Okay, my, my concern is, I think, with respect to the bathroom, if you renovated the bathroom, you would make it ADA compliant, so we're not wasting them there, is that a fair statement?
Correct.
My other concern is, at some point, you're going to have a student who lives in that district who's going to say, "You know what? I want to go to that school, because I've lived near here, and I don't want you blessing me to BRR or somewhere like that that's, that's compliant, and, and we're going to get sued, and rightfully so." So, you know, we push this back every year, it seems like, sooner or later, we're going to have to pay, we're going to pay one way or the other, and, and I think we should keep this in the budget for, for that reason alone, and also because it, the work needs to be done. Sure, we can get away with it for another year or two, maybe the toilets work, something so forth, but, but sooner or later, it's going to have to happen. And my concern is, is that something, if we make it required, it's going to cost us more money for, for other reasons, so that's the big concern I have with respect to the one.
You all sent in Mr. Cullen. Is this mine?
Thank you, nothing new, but I guess if we ban Stephen Harding and Mrs. Iya Carl from comments, we should...
Dr. Clark, how many of our buildings, actually, in the school district, because, could you actually go and explain to us ADA compliance perhaps? Because a lot of people may think it's very cut and dry. It's, um, it, the code for the American with Disabilities Act is extremely comprehensive. So, for example, in bathrooms, it's the width of the door into the bathroom, it's the height of the sinks, it's the location of the mirrors, it's the direction of the faucets, it's the height of the faucets, it's the height of the paper towel dispenser, it's the doors to the cubicle, it's the bars in the handicap stall, and I've probably left, it's the light switch.
Turning radius is the big one. The big one is the turning radius. If someone's actually in a wheelchair, they need to be able to get in there, turn around, and...
But that's specific just to bathrooms?
And then, right.
You've got doors, I mean, all our doorknobs we've been changing, they have to be lever tight, so if you have a handicap, your hands, your elbow...
I guess my question, is it a work in progress, forward?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lu.
Through the chair, Mr. Cullen, is there an ADA accessible bathroom in Dwight right now?
I know that, Miss Ans, no, no, there isn't. Miss Ans and Anna was here, and she is saying no.
There's no ADA compliant bathroom in there.
Some of the schools might have a staff room that is, she's confirming Dwight doesn't.
She's saying no, no. I know there isn't one in the nurses' room, and you know, there's...
I just wanted to touch upon the RTM report that Mr. Perry mentioned. You, that's, that's, I'm sorry. That's not our public record, that was the public, um, subcommittee, the RTM, I believe they looked at that, and they came back, and they determined that they talk about... I don't know, I really, I'm inclined not to support the Dwight Elementary School bathroom project. You know, my thought is, you're not able, unfortunately, because of the building as a hole, to put children in there that, you know, have a disability. You know, the bathroom isn't compliant, it's fine, you're still not going to be able to allow them to go forward, correct? Because...
Correct, but we're still doing doorknobs there, do we do the bathrooms, and the long-range plan from our board of that subcommittee shows Dwight getting a connection, so no longer are you...
I guess I would rather see it all be done together, I think is what I'm thinking. I, I personally would rather see it go, I'd rather see it all happen together and done all at once, if we're in the images of...
Mr. Lu, I want to take a question, Mr. Lu, my turn.
So, I, I just want to clarify, because I was thinking the same thing as, as I, which is, if a disabled child wanted to go to this school now, is the bathroom the only thing holding it up?
No, we have to look at their disability.
So, they couldn't, so even if we put this bathroom...
It depends on the disability, if a child in a wheelchair would have a very difficult time going to Dwight.
Thank you.
I believe, Mr. Lu, you already mentioned flagging your statement.
There are students with disabilities who go to Dwight now. There's a wide range of disabilities that have to, so, you can't be a disability, a solo user, or a wheelchair user. A student with a wheelchair user would be unable to attend Dwight now, not only because of the internal environment, but things that would affect that, and think about how they would access, all the things that children need to access at Dwight. So, a student who uses a wheelchair would not be able to go to Dwight now, and you could experience that, and had worked with families to address that issue with them, and attended other schools that were there. Not a perfect solution, but a solution all the same. However, if you think about the bathroom, it's not just about the wheelchair access. We have students with disabilities who require assistance, not because of a physical manifestation of that disability, but other kinds of daily living skill instruction that happens, or other things that need to happen that require some ADA access in those bathrooms. So, not that my sense really matters on the subject, but I think if we broaden our discussion about disability and access in those bathrooms, while a child with a wheelchair still would not be able to use Dwight, access Dwight, there are many other children with disabilities who would have a far easier time than they do now with their staff in terms of dignity, in terms of opportunity to access, and not have to utilize other parts of the building. So, I would strongly encourage you to take a step forward and make Dwight far more accessible than it is.
Well, that's extremely useful statement.
Thank you.
Mr. Lu, thank you very much, that is good. Ms. Dale?
So, back, I, this isn't, as I said, so thank you, but another portion of, I think, you shared, Mr. Cullen, is that I, I remember just because the bathrooms were in the nineteen sixties, we were having problems getting replacement parts.
Correct.
So, as long as we're going to have to do them because they're so old, then yes, then let's do them the right way, makes them ADA accessible. I mean, that's making so...
A big portion of this is in the foundation, there's...
So, rather than waiting for suddenly one month to the next, you know, we have a month to pop out the toilets, and now we can't pull any of the toilets because something's pecking over, so it's going to get out of the curve, correct it now, and, and while we're at it, we'll get ADA access. So, I'm right, I'm...
Correct. I just have one more question, and it's relative to the high school with the replacement. Do you have an estimate on how much savings that will cost? Not just the effect on the environment, but also savings in terms of heat?
We're working on that, the board of that subcommittee, an energy use study based on not just the windows we're doing, but the roofs we're replacing, building envelope work, the boilers, we're seeing a reduction in the utilities, and Sam Morvino's working on energy use, the study for us, to share with the subcommittee.
Yeah, we have to sub that in some depth. The window energy saving itself is not one of the major costs, however, there are other issues with the windows, including leakage in the building, and because of the red building setup, the lighting and the, this pregnant education issue, it's more of an educational thing, to make sure that you have proper preventive maintenance issue than it would be a heat saving issue.
Thank you, Mr. Lu, for your time. Thank you both. I'm also busy with that, I can't...
I don't have any questions. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Perry?
So, this one clear. I also visited Dwight on Friday, it was my school visit day. If we spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now and fit all these bathrooms, we still cannot have a child with a wheelchair down, attend the school with our other ADA issues that we would have to address at a slight greater expense?
Correct, however, we would be needing the needs of some of the children who currently attend Dwight.
So, can, can you expand on that formula, Mr. Lu, in terms of, as a plumber's child, creating more space in those bathrooms, is that what we're talking about? We have, bathrooms are pretty simple things, there's sinks, there's faucets, and the boys' rooms, there's journals. By, what are we going to change that's going to improve that environment for some of our children in special needs?
Well, for example, if you had a stall that was wheelchair accessible, even though you would have a student who was a wheelchair user, for example, if you have a student who required some assistance in the fasteners, and working with their clothing a little bit, then if they have a dignified way to have a staff member assist them in the bathroom in that stall, which is not useful now. So, that, that, that's one simple way. So, the assistance that a student might need, you might have a student who needed to utilize the, who had difficulty bearing weight on their legs for a long period of time, they still wore ambulants, right? They walked, and you put, but they might need a lowered, the lowered sink would be a benefit, you know, benefit to them, be able to access them. Students who might have a prosthesis on their arm would be able to utilize some of the accessible hardware on the sink more readily than the turning hardware that currently exists in the not accessible bathroom. So, there, there are myriad ways, depending on the nature and extent of the child's disability, that having, having the kind of universal design qualities that ADA compliance requires that will allow students to more independently access to the bathrooms than they are not able. A student who had a particular brace, for example, in a current, in the current situation, would have trouble moving around in the bathrooms because of, because how tight they are, how tight those stalls are. So, there are a whole series, the height of the toilet, for example, a child might have, you know, ADA requires a little bit of a higher foot, those things are helpful. So, it's not, it's the broad, kind of universally designed qualities that will assist people with disabilities, not just people with notorious disabilities or wheelchair issues.
Good chair, Mr. Cullen, are we planning on expanding the size of the bathrooms, and so how would that impact educational space around the middle?
No, because most of the bathrooms in all of our schools are done in concrete block wall, we're not taking any of those down and making them larger. The architects will, we're assuming, to get handicap accessible, either within the boys' girls' room or a separate room outside them. Some of them had a lot of fountain and alcohol, you could put a small bathroom in there, and I can certainly share the drawings with the board and give them to you. I also wanted to just add that, along with what Andres is saying, there's a lot of protection type items we're doing in the bathrooms. We're on the existing bathrooms today, you can't regulate the hot and cold water, where we do now with the new bathrooms. We do tilted mirrors, so if the kids are smaller, can't look up or see themselves, they're tilted. We do protection on the plumbing underneath the sinks, so they have a wrapped insulation material, plastics, so they can't get, touch the pipes.
I know that we've recently done the bathrooms in College Hill, at Sherman, and Stradfield, and Riverfield, and I would...
And I would recommend that if you have an opportunity to do two things. One is, talk to the building principal about what a difference it's made to the children. And then actually see the bathrooms, because it really makes a significant difference. And I do wanna go back, I'm wondering if the board would like to hear from Ms. Anzianno. I don't wanna mention specific needs of children in the building, but the admitting issue is one that is at Dwight, and I don't know if it would help if you hear from the building principal?
I do have more questions.
I think the Ms. Anzianno has...
Okay, thank you.
So, we're gonna be within the same physical confined space. Is there a way we can replace stalls to help accommodate these seniorities' needs? Or change some of the fixtures, temporary spaces, to make the situation better if we are not... If the elements with bathrooms that are mud jobs, we're not gonna bust them out. We're in the same physical space. Big... To create the type of environment that would be more ideal for these students?
Certainly, any piece you do related to the architect schemes is gonna improve the condition of the bathroom that would be used by ADA students. What pieces you do would be, it'd be hard to say. I mean, how would I look at the drawings and say, well, let's do $50,000 worth of work. We'll do maybe just the mirror and just one stall. It's gonna meet certain students' needs, but it's still not meeting all the students' needs.
And how many schools do we have in the district that do not have ADA and $10,000?
Why did, I have to get back to you on that? We've done four elementary schools, certainly the high schools have ADA bathrooms somewhere, and then the middle schools probably do. We're probably looking at the elementary schools.
Or in the Kinley Wood.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's one of the...
Four we did, there's six.
Or is this a situation that exists in three or four schools? For example, we just forego the big upgrade, we just decided to defer the big upgrade at Murphyville School. Do they have a similar situation?
No, their bathrooms were done recently. So, four schools had their bathrooms gutted and redone. Two schools are brand new, elementary, so that's six of the eleven. So you've got five left, and no Dwight doesn't, so that's four.
Los Angeles.
Los Angeles, so they've done the three left.
Los Angeles, I agree with you.
If I could add, you're also important. You have to broaden your scope to people with disabilities, not just children with disabilities, but these buildings are used by the public. They are also buildings, it's about, they have a broad spectrum of disability across the ages as well. Parents of children, maybe typically developing children, parents have disabilities, teachers with disabilities might need those kinds of accessible things too. So I, I'm just wanting to expand that thought across the age spectrum.
I guess, I'm sensitive to that issue. In visiting Dwight school bathrooms, functionally, technically, I didn't find them to be real old. Plus Andres don't look that old, they were within twenty years old. As someone who spent his ages thirteen to eighteen caring for bathrooms in Westport Schools for his father, I would say that we could get by with it the way it is. Sands is outstanding issue. My concern here is that we are about to go before the board's selectmen tomorrow and ask for a massive sum of money, which we have made a priority for our school districts. And the knock on our tours that sometimes is that we always wanna ask for everything. And sometimes we have to say no to certain things. So, I'm cornered on this, because I really feel that, looking at these requests, Tomlinson is something we have to do, it's a safety issue. And if we have a serious safety problem, we're gonna have 344 children, but there's no seats for eleven, twelve year, middle school level, and we need to have a solution to that problem. Something's gonna break at some point if we keep on asking for more. I guess I would want to hear whether or not Dwight is the only school in our district that has got the situation where we cannot accommodate students with a range of disabilities. If that's not the case, then I would probably be more likely to defer this for one more year, so that we can make way for the middle school project.
Well, actually, if I may, we do have other things on the agenda. And if Dr. Clark and Mr. Collins would be able to get back that information to the board Thursday evening, so that, I mentioned before, if it's initially reported to Thursday, so that the board is fully aware, that would be very helpful. And to that end, I wanna bring it back, do you have anything more that you'd like to do with capital when we're going to discuss and then we'll go into the pattern? I just wanna make sure you have...
My only other point on this, and I guess we'll spread this out so much tomorrow, is that I think that at some point we get a little boilers that care of the boilers. Not maybe one trade off here, understand they're old, and understand we're gonna have boiler problems, but we believe we'll be doing a building project there, and I wanna have, as a board member, the appearance of asking for something twice, to the extent that if the boilers break, we'll have to do something about it. But I don't know if that would be something that we'd wanna continue to keep in the amount of budget.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collins?
I would, I agree with Mr. Carrion, the boilers, that's something that I think we can not ask for right now. With this in the back of our mind, don't forget, if a boiler goes, you can always go back to the town and ask for money. If we don't, the building project never even happens, and six, seven months from now, you say, hey, we need that boiler, we can go back to the town and ask for money. It doesn't have to be during this budget cycle, so I would agree with you.
Mr. Collins?
I would agree with that.
And I think this, yeah, I know, Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins, you've been very patient.
Well, having gone last, most of the questions have been answered. But basically, season, I understand that there are currently students in Dwight dependent from ADA, uh, bathrooms. Not that they might come in the future, but there are currently students dependent. And having some knowledge of why they're attending, or opponents, especially the committee, or the first committee, having been on that committee, it was really one question prior to that. There was belief that, yes, the bathrooms are over, the bathrooms are easy to be done. But like everything else, we may do not that year. And here we come again, with the bathrooms coming up again, and I'm sure they will, if it doesn't, this year will come next year. As a lot of maintenance and building projects and repair items do. They would seem to be shifted down, because they're the easiest ones to defer. And I'm sympathetic with that. And I'm sympathetic to the difficulty of type flush a year. So I don't know where we go with it, but there certainly is a need, I think we have to agree with that. And I'll just comment briefly on the other items, I guess. Well, certainly, the, we had, last meeting we had a discussion of what's capital, what's operating. So I thought about that a little, and I would just go down this quick and sort of identify what I thought was taking place. There obviously still are needs to be, so I think we need them, because it's a plan out of the table. That seems to be the only debate or concern. Certainly, the, the bathrooms of Dwight, I think, are capitalizing on the building's budgets. The safety, Stradfield Elementary School, uh, security, safety work, that may, from my understanding, maybe actually, I would even take that out of capital and put it into the building committee budget, because they seem to apply the, at least apply the building committee budget for that. The architects are worried, and so we take the security system. Tomlinson middle school replacement, the spare valve fluid, their needs, they may be long overdue. And they really should have been, in my opinion, with the original building committee, when they did Tomlinson, but they weren't. And now, at this point, I think they may be more of a repair in a sense, so I would actually put them more in the operating budget than the asking request for capital from the town. Because it is a sense of more of a repair, and I think with the building stairs, because it does seem to be treading and it's more of a maintenance repair, I would say. The Grandville Little High School major window replacement, that clearly also was needed, and that was also being based on the project, it probably should all at once, I would say, would be. But that is also probably putting the capital out, it should be non-recurring, capital request, in my opinion. The Purple Woods Middle School boiler, that has also need. We also have a building committee that is more than making plans right now and proposing a large renovation of Purple Woods. I agree, that really part of the building committee's scope of work, I would think, would be there, not part of what the board has been requesting, maybe your capital, or whatever, really building committee, I think, responsibility. So basically, that was my thoughts on those capital items. Previously, I think we argued, and which ones get funded this year is the only question, but they will have to be funded at some point.
The longest, the longest reminder, what Mr. Collins was saying. Looking at the maintenance project page, on page two sixty-seven, and lining that up with the definition of what could be a non-recurring project that we see from the first election board finance. I'm curious as to why the Rockville Little Siding Project, the Rockville Little Middle School Window Repair Project, which I'm like, does it something, down the line there? Seventy thousand, the siding for hundred and twenty-five thousand, the rented maintenance for hundred and sixty-five, the print range for hundred and twenty-six. Basically, landing us over $50,000, I could potentially qualify for non-recurring. Why are we inferring that in our operating budget?
And they, it'd be very, very important, and Mr. Collins, if you're able to answer that this evening? Sure, that would be very helpful. If not, if you could prepare something for this, it is to the board, and we can cover it on Thursday night in more depth, because we do have other things on the agenda this evening, that would be very helpful.
Certainly. I think, I was trying to take them, one at a time, it'd take a long time, but, you know, I believe that a lot of the ones down below, in the maintenance area, were some programs we were developing with the town, and felt that they were gonna go up and down as we did the schools, and did work out. So those numbers weren't fixed. We also felt that those were required, we didn't wanna see those get cut. We seem to think that the non-recurring, we had a comfortable number, we've been looking at the first election on. We know we've submitted five, six million in non-recurring. We know that we've been cutting about one point eight million, two million, and a couple of things get cut each year. So we were basing it on past experience. The two you mentioned up front, Rockville Little School, brand new items. The school's fairly new, we do a lot of work in that building, and experiencing some difficulties. We feel, I believe, I just think that Bonnie McQuaid and myself, as we looked at non-recurring, said, the items that are in the two hundred thousand range and up, we should definitely be putting a non-recurring, and seeing if the town can help us with bonded separately.
Mr. Collins?
I just wanna say one last thing about all of these potential cuts. Looks like we might be heading for more. But just a reminder, because we are talking a little bit about the focus of Fairfield Little School project, that in Subcommittee, we already did cut, not that we can't come through, but we did cut about $6.2 million. So this is something that I just wanna remind the board and the public, that we were very aware of doing, so that we could make room to show that we were trying to be physically responsible for the Fairfield Little School project.
Thank you very much. Mr. Collins?
I've got one more thing I'd like to add to the budget, hold me one. And it's on page, I forgot, I forgot earlier, it's on page, page one seventy-two, section three oh five, one two zero five zero.
Do please repeat, Mr. Carrion, what's on?
Yeah, it's one seventy-two, three, three oh five, Redmond Technical Services, four zero six zero, census verification. It's been shared to Dr. Clark, who's a member of the team. Does that mean enrollment projection funding?
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna propose, as we get further in this project, that we increase that bucket by $15,000. Enrollment projections have served our community on a single-year basis very well of recent years. However, from a long-term planning perspective, I think we need to make better, larger investments here. We're talking about multi-million dollar projects downstream, and I think we have to get our variance down in terms of our projections over the long-term. I'm anticipating that costs $2,000, and if we can't talk about that, then that facility Subcommittee will even, uh, be there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrion, Mrs. Aykerson.
I have to have something that I wanted to add, unless you guys have done it already. Here's the chair to Dr. Clark, as you know, the board is anticipating probably doing an operational audit. I don't know if you guys added in, we talked in the finance Subcommittee, I didn't, and it was just a nice one to do.
No, we did not add it in.
As I said, put a fifty dollar bonus to...
Five oh?
That being said, I am uncomfortable with increasing the percentage, the money that we're requesting from the town. So it would be my recommendation that the board consider asking the superintendent to review some of the other lineups in the budget, so that we certainly not go above the three point seven five percent. I'd be interested to hear what your recommendations are there. I don't wanna check class size, I don't wanna check program. I also think it will be prudent for the board to consider a one percent reduction overall, so that we're coming in under three percent. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I think it's something that we ought to think about. It's difficult, I think this is an excellent budget that is delivered. I just think we're facing a really, really, really tough situation, so it's unvaluable to do.
Perhaps, yes.
And I think it would be helpful if we at least looked at what we would be facing. Maybe we all go through with many of it, because it would be too detrimental. But upon the recommendation, if we looked instead, we took another one percent of what that would be the, the educational. And again, I would love to talk about this program.
Perhaps what we can do, I can roll around and take it and see if members would be interested in having Dr. Clark pursue that. And so, what kind of priorities, in the past, the board has talked about, class size, programs, curriculum pieces, and also the like, that's what I'm trying to point out. So if we can give some direction in terms of class size, programs, curriculum?
Can I also get clarification? According to the discussion tonight, as best I understand, that Mrs. Aykerson wants to staff 50,000 for the operational audit. Mrs. Zahn wants to add 202,000, the three teachers to staff here. And Mr. Carrion wants us to add 15,000, so well over three hundred, approximately 300,000. And now, Mrs. Aykerson wants us to reduce by one percent. So you're actually asking to reduce by probably about one point two five percent if we add these other things in from board noises.
Mr. Collins?
I think probably it would be helpful for you, if you got a sense from us, if anybody else is supportive of those things. Because if nobody else wants to do those things, then you don't have to add them.
Because it's gonna be a tremendous amount of work for us to get something right on Thursday night, and I think it would really help us to know, the 15,000, the 50,000, the 202, and then the one percent. Mr. Carrion?
Would you say, according to what, if we gave a sense of body and showed us the items, whether or not, that that would be something?
That's actually what we're doing by going around the table. And I'll start with Mr. Collins.
I'm on the outside. I, I do as, as I told, is the concept of trying to reduce the budget by one percent. But I think it's easy to say hard to, if everyone wants to reduce the budget, and we went through the budget, there's a very slight increase this year, it was difficult to go through here last year, and I'm not certain how you're gonna cut the budget in...
to look at here last year, and I'm not certain how you're going to cut the budget and be further, and have less of increase and still maintain the program, which is very difficult to expect from their administration. But any of that, I'll comment individually, and rather we suppose tonight, starting with the first, I'd get the three teachers. I understand the need or the desire, some teacher reserve, because the way the break out of the different class sizes may fall, and the potential, but if everything falls in place, in essence, three would be needed, so maybe some will fall in place and some won't fall in place, so I would probably say, if we're looking to cut some, or maybe cut down to two teacher staff, or two teacher reserve, rather than three, because everything may not fall in place. But I see the need to increase some, have some teacher reserve, but I'm just going to look and go to the, hopefully, number. The operation audit, 50,000 dollars, it seems like that's where we're headed, that's what the board wants, I think that's what they should get. 50,000 dollars, I don't know what it would cost, so, interpretation is that's what it costs in an operational audit, and I guess that's what it costs now, would suggest trying to find a place for that. The additional 15,000 for the better matches on enrollment, they're always difficult to project, I'm not sure throwing more money is going to be giving better projections, nice to have good projections, but I'm not sure it's a question of money, it's a question of difficult to project. So I'm, if we're looking to cut, and we're looking to save all the dollars, I'm not sure that's going to make that much difference, and I'm not, I can go either way on that, as I just do not spend it, I don't think it's going to be beneficial benefit. And, what is there?
Minus 1 percent.
Well, I discussed that briefly in the beginning, I agree in principle, I think it's a very difficult thing to accomplish in this budget, considering where we were last year, as well as the increase in enrollment, and the 3.7 percent increase already, with that increase in enrollment, sometimes we do send the argument, if you want to do. I wish, I wish you can cut another 1 percent, with the legality of being able to actually do that. We can do it, and if we have to, we probably will do it, but it will affect some of this delivery, education, fairfield.
Mrs. Aykona? And then I do really have to move on.
No, I just wanted to say, I'm not going to, I'm not necessarily looking to reduce it by 1 percent, I'm asking that, what would happen if we were to do that, that's what I'm looking for.
Mr. Perry?
Okay, so, teacher reserve, three teachers, I understand what we are, why we're asking for that, as parents, being proud of the last five years, that was one of my hot topics, I wanted to see that, however, I think the challenge is to do that financially, is that we're looking at 202,000 dollars and change, the money that we have to hang out, if we don't use that money, we have to return it to the town, so it's kind of a 400,000 dollar negative consistent. My preference would be to have a commitment from the central office or administration to ensure that we do not go over class size, class guidelines, and that we work together with the board to basically forego something else, if we get to a point where we're going to go over class cycling, we have to give up something, we're supposed to add more to it. But I think we need to have that understanding here in the board's opinion before I say no to.
We have that understanding, we've always said that in the past.
So with that understanding, I would be comfortable saying no to the three FTEs and 200,000 dollars. We'll, I'll sort of be guessing, 50,000 dollars, and in terms of the enrollment projections, I think that 15,000 dollars is the best money we can possibly spend. In 2004, when we redid the district this house, we anticipated having 755 less children than we do in the school district this year. And that is elementary school and a half of children, or a full middle school number of children. The deviation of what we're off by is 8 percent, we need to squeeze that deviation down, we're asking for tens of millions of dollars in school budgets, and I'd rather spend an extra 15,000 dollars on getting a longer-term projection right, short-term is fine, but longer-term, closer, and shorting that deviation, so that we have to, so we can ask for less classes, it's going to save us millions on that, that's my pitch for enrollment. In terms of the 1 percent, I am very concerned about the economic environment and the political environment in this town, and I would very much like to see what would happen if this were to happen. I believe that we will likely have to come in under 3 percent. How far into 3 percent, I do believe that it was better to cut the scalpel here at this table, than to catch it at the end of the day. So I would like to see that, at least as I want. I believe that we need to have evaluation, guidance here there, to keep to maintain programs, services, class size, and keep the resources closest to the students on the ground. That's essential to me, to make sure that we maintain those services, so that we don't have to fall behind. If we can't do that with a 1 percent cut, we know, those are, we're going to have to go.
Mrs. Aykona? If you don't agree on the board, maybe we still have somewhere else.
I actually concur completely with Mr. Perry, as much as I would love to have a teacher reserve, it's going to be the first thing that's going to be the target, and we end up with whole, bigger than where we want to be, but I will support the frame that to be for that. It's been supported with the operational audit, just when I'm concerned, and I'd just like to see what the 1 percent would look like. And on the enrollment numbers, I would very much support this, it's just a hot bug issue, we know that we have facilities issues, and we can read this for things, evil is a word, but that is, needs to happen, and we want to, probably, really want to get right, and this is a, a good investment, so that we are good to make better decisions.
For me, I actually believe that I don't want to do the teacher reserve, I actually think it will be something that at this time, you just can't, that's too great. In terms of projections, I think they were, we adjusted the way we were doing projections, and have a far more accurate than recent years. And we consider it, we'd like to see it, but I'd like to see the bids for that, to see in fact if it's going to demonstrate, or to claim something that's better, because quite frankly, the last few years, we've been extremely accurate, and I find that problem isn't a projection so much as with the statistics, we've blocked us by a few, it throws us off, because we're still the home. In terms of the audit, I do absolutely support it, my priorities absolutely are class size and programs, I would like to see what the 1 percent would look like, I think it speaks to what Mr. Williams was talking about before, we have said what we're not doing, and I think sometimes for everyone's benefit, we need to demonstrate what it truly would cost us in the school district, and then people can actually appreciate what that means. Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. With our move forward costs being what they are, and the superintendent coming in with extremely low increase in the budget, I would not support looking for a 1 percent decrease in our budget at all. As far as the political environment, it's actually not coming through, and we're talking about the money and the budget for our schools, so, there's that. As far as the teacher reserve, I'd be happy to sort of narrow it down to, you know, that we're saying that everything might not, well, you know, the price might not fall, how they're planned. As far as the 15,000 for the census, this board has never been willing to take a stand on the districting, so to me, that's thrown away money for 15,000 dollars, so I wouldn't do that. And as far as the operational audit, again, I'd like to wait for our new superintendent to see if there's any, you know, possibility of changing things there, so I would support that. Mr. Tola?
I have a lot of mixed feelings about, the way I see it is this, the, if you cut, try to reduce 1 percent, if the town bodies are going to look at it and say, we're going to cut a little more for 1 percent, we just cut, that's just the nature of the beast, they always seem to do that. I don't remember, since I've been on the board a year, maybe I had it once, where we weren't cut some, it happens all the time. You know, to a certain extent, people, this is a game that we all play, because we ask for certain things, and I imagine that the administrators who prepare this budget have in the back of their mind that we're asking for something, knowing in the back of their mind that something's going to get caught, so, I mean, I throw that out there, I don't think I'm saying anything that anyone doesn't know. So I don't have a problem if we had to cut this 1 percent, looking at what the scenario would be if all happened, maybe that's the thing we could use, that we can use for the other town bodies to say, this is what would happen if this 3.75 percent is cut. I think we have to keep in mind that this district, this district has done more to give back to this town over the last two years than I think any other department compared to, then, you know what, rightfully so, that we're the biggest nut, but we have given back 700,000 dollars last year, we took a less than 0 percent increase last year also. So we need to keep that in the back of our mind. I would forego the 200,000 dollar teacher reserve, not because I want to increase class size, but because I think that if in fact the class size in certain sections goes over, we're going to have to find somebody somewhere in the budget that's done that before, I think we can do it again. The 15,000 dollars, I don't, I, it hasn't even put that in the budget, because I don't know enough about it yet. I think Mrs. Brand is correct with respect to our projections, they know it happened over the last few years, that we've changed our methodology. And I think the problem with the projections is, you, Mr. Perry was right, at the 2004 number, it's off, but the problems over the last couple of years have been the spikes at a particular school, that we did not anticipate, extrapolate a couple of years ago. So I'm not saying that I wouldn't want to spend that money, I just don't know enough about it yet, but you obviously know something, you're at, you want to share in this at some point. The 50,000 dollars, I'm okay with that, I think that's necessary, that's one of those things.
Mr. Williams?
Well, as I said earlier, in looking through this budget, I think they came in very tight, and there isn't a lot of, I look at the chart of move forward costs, 1.86 percent, many of the other costs, but those other costs are things that are necessary, it's teachers, new staff due to enrollment, so we know the kids up here, we knew that, it's the benefits that go along with that, we already said the technology for two years, we're behind in that, so, but there really aren't any areas I can see doing cuts, so I'd like to say no to that, just before this budget. Teacher reserve, though, since we are, somebody said, quote someone else, financial challenge, yeah, I don't think now is the time to add to that, I think if we do add to the teacher budget, Mr. Tola said, that if our town boards might start playing games and taking money away from somewhere else, I'd rather have education charge of where the money's going to come out, rather than someone else that's still hot, I guess, or TM cutting it, that if we, it doesn't shake out correctly, we do need to add one or two teachers, and I think it's, you know, better coming up here for the, for the amount of money we're costing, looking at less than 200,000. The operational audit, I think, is a great idea, and in the long run, even though, yes, we don't have a lot of money now, in the long run, we could be saving lots, a lot more than 50,000, if I have the audit, because that's the whole idea, to find out if we are, you know, indeed overspending areas, or if there's, in our operational areas, or things are overlapping. As far as the 15,000 being added in, I just have a question to you to share, I agree we have problems with, have I agreed with that, pre-heres, with our projections?
Do you want to get some questions?
Could you, Mr. Perry, in case you wanted to add it, sorry. What the 15,000 is actually going for, is this to have them do a study that we haven't asked before, is it for looking for a new company, like, where is the money going?
And, this is the anticipation of a discussion that's going to start happening in February, right now, without getting a mind, you know, any discussion on how enrollment projections are projected, we are still only projecting based on children who are born, parents living in Fairfield. We're not considering demographics, we're not considering zoning, we're not considering immigration of children from other communities, which is the largest factor. A lot of what is done is also patterned against what happened specifically in Connecticut, and, or one of three or four towns is actually growing, or whatever town is receiving. So our numbers get skewed badly. The problem is, and the reason why our buildings are overcrowded, is that we are planning, we have to plan a buffering based on that variance, those buildings. Right now, that buffer, based on recent scurrying, in the 2006, 2007, we're not tracking, well, they're tracking the same way as 2004, by the way, is about 8 percent. 8 percent across 10,000 students is 800 seats. We're just about at about 10 percent capacity system-wide, not all in the right places yet. So my point is, we either ask for 1,000 seats, or we can have 400 seats if we have better projections. That's the value of that expenditure.
That's, I understand, but the actual 15,000 is going to have a study, because they haven't done it on the, on those other topics?
It would be earmarked for, right, a long-term projection study, that would not be based on cohort survival method, that would be based on other factors, that would give us more accuracy in the long term.
Okay, so, in that case, then for 15,000, I would agree with that, because I feel I'm happy with that long-term, just for you.
Mr. Williams?
I agree a little bit with everybody, that's what we say at this point, right? The teacher reserve, I agree that, I like to put things up front and the books, but I think the superintendent of this one, that they know where they might use to go if they were teachers, and so I would say no to that. I would also say no to the 1 percent, I do think it's a tight budget, I think we gave up a lot last year, and I believe, like Mr. Tola said, that they will come along anyway and just cut, make cuts, so I think we are doing a good job with that. I do agree with the projections that Mr. Perry suggested, so I would go for 15,000, and I would also agree with the operational audit for 15,000.
And, thank you, and I think that finishes at least for this evening, and we also will be going.
I'm not clear, I'm very clear, I'm not going to lie, that's 15, yeah, that's 15, I'm very clear, there seems to be a majority for adding 15,000 for enrollment, there is not a majority for adding staff reserve. I have, if I heard it correctly, three people who said no to the 1 percent, two, I, I, Mr. Fagin, I wasn't sure if he came down, his sounding way as a no.
I agree.
And I had two who said yes, one who said it might be a possible scenario to do, and three who said no. If we do, if we add the audit and the enrollment projections to a 1 percent cut, they're asking us to find 1,450,000, 634, between now and Thursday night, to recommend, because we have to add in 65,000. And I'm really not clear, Mr. Fagin, you're, depending on how you go, and Mr. Tola, asking for this scenario, I'm not clear what our direction is.
Why don't Mr. Fagin, you're too, because I do want to wrap this up if we can.
If there are 5% cuts, I mean, we're asking.
Yes, do you want, do you want central office to reduce, to bring a list Thursday night, that would equal 1.4 million dollars of cuts?
I don't think that'd be useful, I'd love to have it, I don't think you'd be able to do it, so my answer is probably no. That's why, I'd love to have that, I just don't think it's possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, um, I'm going to move to solo.
No.
Mr. Carey?
So, if I understand correctly, we're not going to look at the 1%. What I would like to propose is that, where we don't want to add any, you know, you had an equal dollar.
Right, that would be $65,000. About doing the 1% is $65,000. We can do that. Thank you very much, I'd like to give a quick appreciation, I appreciate it. All right, to the next agenda item, which is your thoughts and recommendations, first to the district chief of plan. The only thing I want to tell you is that you will be receiving a very comprehensive report on that at the business meeting in March. Thank you. We plan to improve facilities, initial imbalance. This is Katia Leonard, in central office, and we're working on this, and then I'm going to ask her to stay also to do the rest of the talk. Thank you.
At our last planning committee for facilities, technology, and planning, I have represented the task force, the cultural diversity task force, brought to that committee a recommendation from the task force, asking that the board of education consider opening up opt-in to McKinley to all 10 elementary schools for the 10-11 school year. At this point, we bring this, our determination to use significantly different practice that we've taken part in in previous years. In previous years, we've married the opt-in options with oversubscribed, undersubscribed schools. We've limited to two or three schools, and moving forward, and later in the school year, around May or June, notifying families, collecting responses, and confirming those responses around June. It's a desire of the task force to get out relatively early this year, right before kindergarten registration, and we need your blessing to move forward with that. Since that meeting, Mr. Carey presented to the board of education that evening after the board of that meeting, this option. And since that meeting, I've received numerous questions. I've highlighted those questions in a Q and A in the packet that you received this evening. It's actually at the very beginning in your packet, regarding the race to the top. I'll walk you through a little bit about that Q and A, so it can open up some conversation for you if you choose. Received questions about enrollment at McKinley Elementary School. I'm sorry, everyone find that in the packet. We've had questions and answers regarding opt-in to McKinley Elementary School. Specifically, enrollment projections for next year puts us at 413 students at McKinley, which equates to 24 sections. Currently, we have 451 students at McKinley and in 26 sections. I do highlight those for you, that these numbers, if any projection is off at an elementary school, it's more likely to be at McKinley this week because of the high level of transitivity, especially experienced over the summer, I will tell you. It's not something that we know about when we leave for the summer. A lot of the registrations and withdrawals occur between July 1st and the first day of school at McKinley. So, although we are projecting 14 students, we may or may not come in on that, that number. One of the class size guidelines for McKinley, as you know, they are different than the other elementary schools, K2, 19 students, at K3, 5, it's 21 students, different than the other elementary schools, at 23, K2, 25 at grades 3, 5. Based on those guidelines, based on projections, I did a little bit of calculating. I, in the past, have created a buffer at each classroom, at each grade level, to account for the transitivity. So, based on these numbers, we have about 24 available seats for the 10-11 school year for students to opt into McKinley. We also want to note that within the plan that was approved by the board of education on August 15, 2007, there is a statement made that the school district would not want to see an increase in the average class size at McKinley, as this would likely be counterproductive to improving student academic performance. And that is something that I've been asked about, and that's why I felt like I needed to address here was Q and A. So, if we ran numbers, and I caution you in this next section, that we're using the unofficial numbers that we run here, based on October 1st, 2009. Remember, we don't receive official numbers from the state department until second or third week of April. But based on the numbers that we have, and the average minority counts, the average minority percentage at the elementary level is 14.71%. In order to be within, not at a balance racially at the elementary level, you cannot exceed a difference of 25 percentage points from the average. So, that would be at McKinley, we would not need, we would not be able to exceed a minority count of 39.71%. Based on that, in the first chart, you'll note currently, with 451 students, we have 254 majority students, 197 minority students. Percentage-wise, that's 56.32 majority and 43.68% minority. So, in calculating and estimating what, how many students will we need to move into McKinley in order to be not at M, in order to be not imbalanced, we would have to move 46 majority students into McKinley. It's based on the assumption that we're not moving anyone else, though. Because we, tonight, we're not talking about opt-out of McKinley, we're talking about opt-in to McKinley. There is also a portion of our racial balance plan that talks about opting out of McKinley as well. We've been asked questions about costs related to opt-in to McKinley. And relatively, at this time, transportation costs are absorbed within our own typical transportation cost, because we add students beginning or end of routes. We don't add a bus, we haven't done that yet, and the only cost really is a longer bus ride for students currently. But if numbers grow, if we do meet the goal of 24 additional students, or even 46, we would need to consider mini-buses. And this is a, pretty much, an unpredictable piece, because you don't know where the students are coming from. And if we open up the invitation, we accept applications, we review applications, and we're not sure where those students may be coming throughout the district. There is one caveat, though, that we discussed with Mr. Ficki, and that is, for those students coming from the furthest points of our school districts, such as Dwight, Burr, and the South Core area of Mill Hill, we may need to consider, regardless of the number of students coming from those areas, a mini-bus dedicated to those far-reaching areas, because the ride really would be too long for kids. So, regardless of whether we have 1, 2, or 5, 6, 10 students coming from those points, we may be forced to consider mini-buses, and certainly, that could be calculated until we actually know who's coming. And each mini-bus is anywhere from $51,000 to $55,000. We've also been asked a lot of legality questions about offering this to all 10 versus just a few. I will have to ask you to make correction in your page, though, please. The second bullet that reads "actions allowable," a small typo, but significant, should read "actions not allowable," please. Sorry about that. But what is allowable? As addressed in the plan, you can make enrollment and placement decisions based on, which is recommended in the plan, student achievement, as well as students' qualification for free reduced lunch. Also, in the past, we have married this opt-in option with overutilized and underutilized schools, so you can use that approach. For example, we opened up Osborne Hill last year. And we also have the option of instituting a lottery if there are more students that apply for the seats that are available. What we cannot do, though, is base admission into enrollment to a school on a child's race or ethnicity based on Supreme Court ruling in the recent years. We've also been asked the question, does this establish a precedent if we open it up to all 10 schools? And frankly, we don't believe so, because we open up opt-in, opt-out on an as-be basis. In the last three years of offering this, we've chosen different schools, and that's been a standard practice. Big question is, what would the impact be on the feeder pattern? And currently, the students who opt into McKinley or opt out of McKinley have the option of attending the middle or high school of the home district or the new school. And we don't know their decision until they reach 5th grade and 8th grade. So, if there's a current 3rd grader that opted into McKinley from another school, we won't ask that family their choice of middle school until they actually get to 5th grade. So, the impact on the feeder pattern is a little unpredictable until the child actually has to make a decision to go to a middle or high school. I will tell you, though, in the past three years, I did a little bit of analysis, from McKinley to Burr, we have three students. So, three students at Burr will have to make a decision as to what middle school they'd like to attend. There are six students from McKinley to Dwight that will have to make that decision over the last three years they opted out. And from McKinley to Jennings are seven students. And additionally, five students from Stratfield to Jennings who would have to make a middle and high school decision. So, we, some of that impact is a little unpredictable until the child gets to a point where they have to make a decision. And then finally, what's the impact of projections? Actually, we count those students as part of that school on October 1st. So, the child who from Strat, from Stratfield to McKinley, that family is now fully a McKinley family, and the child is counted in enrollment on October 1st, which the projections are based on. So, those are the questions I feel over the last couple of weeks, thought it would be beneficial for everybody to hear about, nothing happened new, and is there any other questions we have? Someone?
Thank you. I guess, yeah, one other piece of information, if you could. Since this plan hasn't worked since its inception, on a future agenda, I would like this cost again. And I'd also like to know, how many sections would be collapsed at McKinley if guidelines were raised to the same standards as every other elementary school in this town? Thank you.
Mrs. Aykot, Mr. Carey?
I just have two questions. The first is the busing for the middle school students. Once, if they choose to go out of district for middle school, so, do we have the bus cost for that as well?
Mr. Cullen, I would imagine we practice the same thing, that it would be, yes, we would put them on a route closest to their home district, as we do now, and we would provide them transportation all the way through high school, yes.
So, there could be some costs that are going to attach to that.
If the numbers are greater than.
Right. Okay, and then my other question is, just so I understand this clearly, if you do this, you actually need 46 kids to move in?
Majorities.
To, to majority students to move in.
That's a big assumption.
In order to then get into compliance, is that correct?
So, put our number underneath 25% discrepancy, which puts us in balance.
But we only have 24 available seats, so you're assume, you're then hoping to get then 24 kids to move out?
Well, I have not done the numbers for how many students need to leave, and it's not as easy as cutting the number in half.
But if you only have 24 available seats, and you need 46 kids to move in, how's?
It all assumes the majority or minority background of the child, though. So, you need actually 46 majority students to move in. The opt-out piece has yet to be calculated.
You can't, it's all theoretical, because if 24 minority students left McKinley, you'd be fine. If 24 majority students went to McKinley, and 46 minority students moved in, you'd have worse racial imbalance, and you can't do it based on the child's race. So, Mrs. Katia Leonard has given you a specific number, but in order to get the racial balance you're looking for, the numbers may have to be greater, because you'd be taking both majority and minority students.
Okay. I don't know. I like the questions Mrs. Onis.
Mr. Carey, a couple of points, just to clarify from our discussion in the subcommittee, in terms of cost, the buses. I think that our discussion was, it could be from $0 to $150,000 depending on response, and we get a better response, that would get us closer to where the state wants us to be. After hearing Mrs. Cullen's question, is it possible for us to get where the state wants us to be? Is there a way to resolve that potential cost?
The state wants us to be underneath, under, below 25% discrepancy.
Because as I understand it, some of our other options are very expensive and time-consuming, so I did want to give this a try, if we can get to a point where we're going to move in the right direction, and leave some pressure for, fixes the problem. In other words, unbalancing that, that cost, right, against the cost of the Agnes School, the cost of the district.
Correct. Supplemental programming, these are all the things that we're discussing.
I'm willing to look at that cost benefit analysis. Mrs. Onis' question, we asked a very specific question in the subcommittee, in terms of what was more important to the administration in terms of the best for the kids, be it class size or fulfilling the state mandate, and it was clear that class size, the students rose because of ESL component.
That's correct.
So, the administration made clear that maintaining class size was what was best for the students. The state requirement, it is obviously something we have to meet, but in terms of the best for the students, that class size is something that they didn't have confidence.
Mr. Cullen?
So, do you understand that based on Mrs. Aykot's question, we won't know if this will help us until we implement it?
Right.
And then it's a, it's a, it's a crapshoot?
Right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yeah, it's always been somewhat of a crapshoot for the last four years, and we knew that, and the state's known that, and the state said it's okay. The state has said to us, try certain things. And the previous board made a decision not to take a neighborhood through somewhere else, and just move it to McKinley, and move it, or not McKinley, to go up somewhere else to solve this, this state perceived problem, not a character problem. And so, that's the route we took, and this is another step in the process to see if we can get this to work, and it had been working over the last few years. The numbers have gone down, but for this, this year, it's gone back up. So, is it a, you know, a one-year quirk? I don't know, maybe not, but I think we're complying with the state law. I didn't get into a long discussion, but I wanted to have a 10-point tonight about the legalities of this, this law, because, you know, I've come around, like Jim Lee was four years ago, I think that the law's unconstitutional, and, you know, if we mandated certain neighborhoods to govern this school, to try to solve this problem, we could sue, and we probably would lose. So, I'm perfectly comfortable doing it this way, and we'll see what happens, and we'll see how the state reacts. And at some point, if it doesn't correct the state's perceived problem, we're going to have to make a decision as a board to correct the problem that the state says is the problem, and we'll get sued, and the issue will be resolved. Or, we can tell the state, we're not going to do this because we think your law's unconstitutional, and it'll be decided by a judge in federal court. I'm absolutely convinced of that. So, in favor, in favor of this right now, let's see what happens, and that's our.
Mr. Cullen?
So, two more questions. If we, we go ahead and implement this, and it doesn't work to solve our imbalance, we're committed to it, even if we already accepted these kids, we're committed, and then if, but are we off the hook from the state, given that we made our best effort? We're not, we still have to solve the problem anyway. Thank you.
Perhaps if board members are in agreement, what we may be able to do is action for this on an agenda. I will talk about the part, clearly, there is a time limit here, because I know this university task force member wanted to make it available and communicate it well to the public. So, we believe our next meeting is February 9th. I honestly don't know what we have coming up, but if it is possible to do that, perhaps that would be a direction, given all sort of time. And with that, also, to Mrs. Aykot, and then I would like to wrap this up to, um, as long as the public can.
I would be very receptive to that, considering we're committed to us, as I had planned up. So, they are. they are. My question is, at what point do we just say to the state, you know what, we tried a bunch of stuff, none of this stuff works, people want to be in the schools that they're in, we're not interested in doing this anymore, and then we decide that we have to...
Well, we didn't agree that we would ask possibly State Department of Education consultants or representatives to come and speak to the Department of Education sometime after the official numbers come in April. So you may have that opportunity to tell them.
I'm leaning in that direction.
I just, to say that you can't use race to move kids around, the statute is called racial imbalance statute. It's absolutely ludicrous, but this is the state dictating, saying, you don't have enough kids, certain race, the people are stolen vice versa, I want you to do something about it. And I'm talking about this at ten to five, but I wasn't. I'm too sensitive again.
Mrs. Onus and I are ready to go on.
So let's, I'm hot and heavy about how I feel about this law. Let's implement what has been suggested, take a deep breath, see what happens at the end of the year. Can we talk about this in here for now?
I think we can need this up on an agenda item soon, but we do have another, if Dr. Clark continues.
I just, I'm interested in knowing whether or not you want to wait until we get the final numbers, or you want us to put this on an agenda in February?
I'd like this to be on the agenda.
I'll talk to you about what we've got on the other page.
And I believe we have more for the super teams.
Very briefly, Mrs. Katia Leonard in central office put a lot of information together on the Race to the Tot grant. We've had two sets of information come to you, there's a letter packet tonight, I don't think we need to discuss it, we just wanted to explain to you, we had a one-week turnaround to apply for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that we would get over four years, so about thirty-three thousand dollars a year from the state. Our best guess is in order to be eligible to apply for that money would have cost us between fifty and a hundred thousand each year. And we decided in this economy, that's not a good idea. We didn't agree with all of the things the state would require us to do. We didn't have the opportunity in the one week to have a board meeting to discuss it. And we just said, we don't have the people, the time, for the programs in place to make us eligible. And also, we don't know if Connecticut is going to get the full funding, they think they are, so we made an executive decision to say, we're not going to spend money to apply for money we may not get.
Is there another question?
Dr. Clark, is it true that you can reapply for this in equal?
Well, there is a second round. We've also been told that some districts apply, and they will probably withdraw. And we thought it was more honest to not apply first time, see the fallout, because other districts didn't, see if the memorandum of understanding changes, see if certain requirements change, if it looked more feasible in April, then we would come to you and say, okay, we're going to try. But again, thirty-three thousand dollars a year for four years with all of the requirements didn't make sense.
Mr. Kinnear?
So in terms of the requirements, I'm understanding this is money that's coming from the Federal Department of Education, and they have an agenda where they feel by making certain changes in education that will benefit students nationwide. I understand the cost component, but what would the value be of making these changes that the federal government, due to state, was asking us to make to the district and the students?
And I'll do a little political statement here, rightly so. Most of these dollars are targeted to districts where there's very low student achievement and high levels of poverty. So for example, Bridgeport, Stanford, Moore Walk stand to gain substantial dollars, and that's why there were so many requirements attached to it. We, when we looked at the requirements, felt that we already had a lot of this in place in our own models, and that it's just not the direction we're headed in in a lot of them. But they make sense if you look at large cities or rural districts, who stand to gain substantial dollars.
So to sum it out, it's going to cost more than we're going to get?
Yes.
And we wouldn't necessarily benefit in community like Fairfield from the recommendations that they're asking us to change.
That's the opinion of central office.
And that political argument for me, because when wealth is redistributed, it's moved away from Fairfield typically, is that what we're...
Look, I'm not going there. You know, I will tell you that if you look at it across the country, I really believe in the intention, because not all districts are yet achieving at the level we are. And we would have had to redirect staff and time and energy away from things we think are important today and tomorrow for the kids in Fairfield.
Do you think if, for some reason, the money was, the dynamic was different? If it was a million dollars in, and we don't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars to make the changes, or let's say five hundred thousand dollars to make the changes, we had a net positive effect? Would the changes still be things that we probably wouldn't need to do?
Well, rhetorical question, but if it were that much money, we would have tried. And you know, also, just having a week to apply for something, you know, if it's a million dollars, it's one thing, if it's thirty-two thousand a year with all of these requirements, and I personally didn't see how they would really help us. And the reporting requirements are enormous too.
Is that a big part of it, would be staffing requirement for you to keep up with?
Right.
I understand that New York decides to not take seven hundred million dollars to the United States, that was set up for them. Would like to look at second round, if that money comes back into the system and comes to us, then it might be worth looking at again.
The biggest piece for us, there would be wholesale changes at the high school level. Huge, huge programmatic changes at the high school level. We've just had two NEAS visits where they've made recommendations and commendations, and we've got things moving in the right direction. This would have, I think, thrown the high schools in particular into a tailspin.
Would you be kind enough, when April rolls around, to review if it's a bell, and just give your recommendations to the board again, so that someone can keep track as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. I think we are now ready for all the comments and petitions. During this time, the board will hear comments and the competition from any individual person standing. Any single presentation is limited to two minutes. You will see Mrs. Dyer is over here in the front row, and will be raising a hand. Body or visual equipment cannot be used without a day's notice of preparedness. If we will not hear comments from individual children of matters, our comments are addressed to specific individuals. Two individuals are asked to speak comments. Ask to comment on any body noted at any time of the time is under consideration. I ask if you do have comments, please come to the podium, we are running tight on time. And thank you very much. If you're ready to receive.
Sure, Richard Johnson lived in Sudbury. Just two other things unrelated. Dwight is a school that has a magnet program for these kids, and the kids from our district come to that because they have specialized training and teaching. And as part of that, some of these kids, many kids, especially, you might not realize that, as Andrea said, activities and daily living, combing their hair, zipping their zippers, tying their shoes, that's taught to children. Many kids are typical, they learn this out of their home, but the school is a valuable part of the education process. So the education is named place in classroom, it takes place in the bathroom as well, in the hallways. And you realize also, the staff has to be with these kids as part of their IEP, IEDL. So you realize that dignity applies to teachers as well as the busy kids. So, you know, please underline this, other schools have all the environment to facilitate the teaching. So the other point I like to drive out is, is the fact that we, the district, has spent a lot of time with the IDEA ARRA grant. We've pushed forward a lot of different ideas. Two-point-four money is a one-time deal to drive achievement, drive the teaching process. Andrea has gone great lengths to follow the guidelines, get the spirit of the law supposed to do, and take it forward. I think as a board, to start to get into the nitty-gritty of this, and derail what may already be started, mainly not only waste money, but waste time. So encourage you as a board to validate what she's done, and what the district has done so far, and push forward with this to get it done quickly to drive achievement, and to minimize the gap between the achievement of those who this money will benefit, and those in the district who are... Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Peter Rupert, Warwick Avenue. I'm, you know, first I'll just say that, you know, you guys do a very difficult job, but I am imploring you to be the advocates that you should be as the Board of Education for education in our community, okay? I mean frankly, if you are here just to make sure that the board is not spending, or the education system is not spending taxpayers' money, then frankly, you've run for the wrong board. I've heard some, you know, kind of crazy things here tonight, you know, concerns about, you know, making sure that our firearms are safe, that might be an over expenditure. You know, there are at least three board members who say they have noticed that there's a unsafe condition in one of our middle schools. You know, those are all things. And I think Mr. Tola said something along the lines of, you know, we pay now, or we're definitely going to be paying later. Frankly, I don't want my children to pay later, because their education is not being advocated by the board, nor do I want other citizens of this community, their sons and daughters impacted that way, because you're not willing to advocate. Please advocate for the children of this district.
Good evening, my name is Trudy Darrell. For those of you who don't know me, I live on Woodbridge Road in the Hollow Hill District. But it's actually as a member of the Cultural Developmentary Task Force, and I'm coming to speak to you. There are a few points on the McKinley opt-in discussion that were made that I would like to speak to. One of the points that was made, that we haven't been able, as a district, as a board, whatever, to achieve our goal, and that we, whatever we've been doing, hasn't been working for the past three years. Part of what was brought up at the last meeting on tonight, was the urgency to have the board consider allowing an open house to occur at McKinley prior to kindergarten registration, because that is one key thing that we have not done, nor have we been able to do in a timely manner in the past few years. So I would urge you to consider at least making some kind of vocalization, or some kind of vote, or whatever needs to happen, to accept the task force recommendation, especially on that particular point, that it may happen, we were hoping that it could happen in the first week of February, when the kindergarten packets go out to the families. And if it wants to be an agenda item in future agendas, I think that's an excellent idea. But for that particular point, if it waits until the next meeting, we've lost that critical time. And yet again, we will be behind the eight ball in trying to get parents who may not be affiliated with the school yet, who would be willing to come and see what an incredible facility McKinley is, and what it can offer their children. Thank you.
Hi, Meredith McCormick, Fairfield Beach Road. I am the budget rep for Sherman School, and that means I noticed on the budget request 2010-2011 sheet that is handed out tonight, maintenance, projects, priorities, proposed cut on that, or fifty thousand dollars that was earmarked to be spent at Sherman's School on the lockers. I'm hoping that this is still just a proposed cut, and all of you and other town bodies have been invited into Sherman on March 5th. And before you take these lockers off the table, if you could just wait until that time. If you want to see them tomorrow, let me know, I'll meet you there tomorrow. Our lockers were built when the school was built in nineteen sixty-three, they're almost fifty years old. They are about this narrow, and an empty backpack does not fit in them. That does not even speak to the fact that they are seriously rusted, some of the handles are off. Mr. Kinnear, tell me what they're called, but the little thing you pull up to get your locker open, you literally, some of them don't even have that, you can pull up the silver pin on top. The lockers don't close, they're falling apart. So please, before you take that off the table, at least just come into the school on March 5th or anytime that you want, and I'll be helping children.
I'm Jim Gallagher from Congress Street, Fairfield. First off, I want to thank all the members of the board for your very astute observations and comments tonight. You're honestly doing a great job serving Republicans, serving the school system, and I thank you very much. That was the good part. This year, the teachers and administrators of the school system have gracefully declined both wage and step increases, specifically to minimize any increase in the Board of Ed budget. Miraculously, there's also no increase in medical premiums this year. Historically, these two liabilities have accounted for the majority of budget increases for Board of Ed. Despite these incredible efforts, the budget before you represents a five-point-two-million-dollar increase. It's sad to note that this budget includes a decrease of sixty thousand dollars for textbooks and instructional materials used directly by the students. I find very little diligence in this budget construction, and this thing about textbooks really makes me think that the priorities of this budget are going in the wrong direction.
Hi, Maureen Sawyer, Thor Place. I'm speaking on behalf of the Riverfield School PTA Executive Board. We're here to offer our support of the 2010-11 Fairfield Public School Education Budget. We understand it's a daunting task before you tonight and the next few days, balancing crucial needs of our children's education and the need to be fiscally responsible. We want to share with you what we believe are the most crucial needs of our district as a whole. To begin, maintaining class size guidelines. It is a proven fact that children learn in smaller classes. We at Riverfield have recently felt the negative impact of large class sizes. We believe that this is a small contributing factor to the disappointing CMT scores in last year's third grade class, whereby just under one-third of these students did not achieve goal on their math or reading CMTs. Enrollment projections are volatile and can increase over the course of the next seven months. With that in mind, we are asking that you publicly lend your support to increasing staff necessary for the upcoming school year to responsibly cover any additional sections that will inevitably arise this summer. Secondly, retaining the current teaching staff in Fairfield. Fairfield's excellent educational reputation is due in large part to the highly educated, talented teachers and support staff we currently have in our district. It would be irresponsible and counterproductive not to value and secure one of our town's most valuable assets. Finally, distributing resources reasonably throughout the district, not just textbook and technology, but more importantly, staffing. Staffing should not be based only on enrollment size of any given school, but more importantly, the learning needs of the children within each specific building. Our principal, Mr. Paul Tuazo, says, fair is not treating every child the same, fair is giving every child what they need. That is what we believe your budget deliberations and allocations should be focused on, what is fair, what is needed for each school and each child.
Good evening, I'm Kristen McGarthy, 1625 Melo Avenue, and I also want to thank each and every one of you board members and central office staff for the tremendous amount of work and time and effort that you've put into this process. That said, I just want to make a few comments about some of the things that I've heard here tonight. And first and foremost, as an RTM member from District Six, and a member of one of the bodies who will work with you in this budget process, I just want to clarify and confirm, as you all know and are well aware, that the RTM, the Board of Selection, and the Board of Finance do not determine for you what your priorities are. That is entirely up to you as a board. I know that that comment was made tonight, and I just wanted to clarify that certainly the boards all are in a position, whether... the boards all are in a position, whether it's a political climate or a financial reality that we all face, to take difficult looks at this budget along with you. And I stand here tonight to just ask that we continue to work together and have conversations. I also want to say that I am in support of the $50,000 for the operational audit as a representative. There are many people in our town who have asked for that. This is a way to have a conversation, and I think that that's what's important, that we remain in conversation, that we continue to work together and make tough decisions. But again, ultimately, when that bottom line comes to you, that will be up to you to decide the most important priorities, which I think you've talked about here tonight, class size, and programs, which I too am in support of as well. Thank you.
Jayav Redan, old business. Two nice gentlemen gave a presentation concerning high school counselors. Oh, it was nice. Wax grabzonic. However, reality brought me to the forefront. About three years before the 13 come or less under the military guidance of George I, my high school counselor told my parents, myself, and others like us, that we were not college material, even though we were taking a regents course, and our marks in math never went below A, and in other subjects never went below B+. That individual was proven wrong in 1955. Fast forward to this summer, Andrew Ward High School. Surprisingly to some of you, my daughter was going to graduate in 1984. In the winter, autumn of 1983, spring of 1984, I happened to read a foreign edition of the New York Times. In there, it outlined a product assertion for all of those who had been, quote, ordained pre-SAT and SAT. It was given, quote, after the school hours. I inquired of my daughter, she knew nothing about it. She inquired of her friends, they knew nothing about it. I told her, when she went to school that Monday, don't go to class, go to see the high school counselor.
Let's be done. I'm sorry, but you're...
Okay. Anyway, all is not correct in the high school counseling program. Thank you.
You're now onto, I think, oh, I think you're trying to...
Hi, Jen from Aksen, Connolly from Andrew Place, and I too am here as a member of the Cultural Diversity Task Force, just to reiterate some points, hopefully brand assistance to leave them with you as some final ideas. One regarding the opt-in, opt-out program of the past four years. It has in fact worked every year. In terms of the percentages, even this past year, the program worked. What it didn't take into account, because it's not part of the program, was an influx of minority students, either, and I don't know this, whether it was into kindergarten or simply moving into the McKinley District, but in terms of the percentages of majority moving in, minority moving out, we did continue on the path to progress, which had been the precedent of the previous years. The program is working, very slowly, not the increments that the plan had hoped for, but we're hoping to continue it with this measure, which is something we've never done before, which is this early open house, very well advertised townwide, in terms of trying to reach out. So that we are looking both for this early open house and the permission to advertise it accordingly. I don't think for a second it will solve it in one year. Obviously, the numbers would be very difficult for it to be 46, but it is continuing in our committee, the Board of Ed, and the town's good faith effort to address what the state has asked of us. And what they've asked of us, I wholeheartedly agree with the idea that being antiquated unconstitutional, and ready to fight with you on that one. But the point being, this is part of our good faith effort. It would represent that we are not staying with the status quo, that we are trying yet another step in a plan that has been working, albeit slowly. And so I hope we'll have your support with that. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments from the board?
At this time, our educator motion to be heard from Mrs. Swan, second to try to buy a phone call on the table.